Here.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Here. All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, please turn it off or to silent mode so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do have a couple of presentations to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Debbie Collins, a former employee of Johnson County and a Gold Star Mother, as well as John Smith, who is the former president of the Olathe American Legion. I have a proclamation declaring September 25 as Gold Star Mother's Day and as Gold Star Mothers' and Family Day. So I will present that to Debbie at this time. And Debbie, if you or John have comments, you're welcome to make. So you want John to go first?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you for, Commissioner, Chairman, for allowing us to be here today and to help us recognize Gold Star Family Day. The Gold Star actually dates back to World War I. Families would put a blue star in the window if their son or daughter was serving or any family member, and if that member was killed, they would put a gold star in the window. 1923 Gold Star Mother's Day was recognized, and that has since been changed recently to the Gold Star Family Day. In 2016, we broke ground at Veterans Park here in Olathe for a Gold Star Memorial on Veterans Day during Johnson County event. It was a community project, small donations. We did fundraising from garage sales, 50/50, just a box setting on the counter. I met with people at the YMCA, and they just wrote personal checks. We did not do any corporation or federal monies. That was in September 2020. Woody Williams was here, and we dedicated the memorial. It's at the west end of the park. This, tomorrow, in fact, the mayor, or not the mayor, the governor, will be dedicating a plaque on the grounds of the State House. Woody challenged her in 2020 to put up a memorial like we have here, but for different reasons, it is a plaque and not the memorial. Olathe and Johnson County needs to be proud. It is the only Gold Star Memorial in the state of Kansas. There is now one in every state, and some states have multiple ones, but we only have one. At this event on Saturday at 11 o'clock, we will be honoring Woody Williams, as well as having Debbie Collins as our main speaker in regards to the Gold Star, and I invite all of you there. Please bring your lawn chairs. We do not have any seating out there. This is in the west end of the park. And thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you again.
Thank you. Debbie?
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, Commissioner, and our Chairman Ilert and Commissioners for this recognition. My comments are going to be very brief today because I am speaking on Saturday at the Gold Star recognition ceremony out at the Veterans Park as John mentioned. But on behalf of all of the Gold Star families in Johnson County, I just want to acknowledge our appreciation of this proclamation. It is only through remembrance of our loved ones who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country that they will live on. My son, PFC Cale Miller, was killed in action in Afghanistan on May 24 of 2012. This past May marked 10 years that we have been without him, yet it seems just like yesterday that he was standing right here. And in fact, I'm sure he is standing right here, right now. Probably is that niggling little irritation right here in the back of my head. The thing about being a Gold Star parent is that the very worst thing that could happen to you has already happened. The next worst thing that could ever happen is that our sons and daughters who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country are forgotten. And so through the Gold Star organizations, the American Legion, all of the military organizations out there, we do remember our sons and daughters. And so I would encourage you all, if you know someone who has been killed in the line of duty, say their name. Say it loudly and proudly, and say it over and over so that they will not be forgotten. That really is the very worst thing that can happen to us. So for Cale and for the many other Johnson County men and women who were killed in action, I just want to thank you for this recognition. Please always remember and never forget. Thank you.
You know, I should make this comment. John mentioned that there was a lot of work that went into providing the memorial, and a veteran who created a 501(c)(3) to promote a memorial in every state in the country was very, very active, and he was present at the dedication. And unfortunately, he passed away, I think it was in June or July of this year. So Mr. Williams deserves a lot of credit for bringing us to this point. Thank you.
Can I have one thing?
Yeah, go right ahead.
One thing I forgot to mention, Woody Williams is the last Medal of Honor winner from World War II, and he passed in June. When he was a young man and driving a taxi when the war was started, he delivered the telegrams to families that had lost a loved one because that's how it was done back then. We've since changed that. You just don't get a phone call or a telegram. But his goal has been accomplished. Every state and Puerto Rico have a monument.
Thank you, John. And next, I'm going to ask our chief legal counsel, Peg Trent, to join me at the podium, recognizing a long-term employee of the legal department who is retiring after 23 years with Johnson County. Larry McCauley. Not only have I had the opportunity to work with Larry here at the county, but also our relationship goes back several years when he was on the Lenexa City Council. So Larry, join us, please, and I'll present the certificate of achievement to you
Thank you very much.
in honor of your work, and our best wishes for your retirement. And Peg, you might have some comments?
Yes, briefly. Just for everyone, Larry's been an employee with the county legal department for over 23 years, and during his tenure with the county legal department, he also served 11 years as those years as the director of the legal department. He has provided legal advice over the years to several years, including, as the chairman said, the Board of County Commissioners and several county departments, agencies, and offices, including, some of you who are here today, corrections, medic, medical examiner, and fire districts. At this time, if we could wish Larry best wishes and safe travels as he starts to travel, I understand, as part of his retirement. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much, and thank you. I'll call you Ed
That's fine.
instead of Chairman. I normally refer to people by their title in formal meetings, but Ed and I, as he said, have been friends for probably about
Decades.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. But I have had a very rich and rewarding career here at Johnson County, and prior to that, in Lenexa as a council member. So I've been involved in local government for 40 years, I guess it's been. And it's been, when I came to the county, I was lucky to be hired by former Chief Counsel Don Jarrett, and continued to be hired by current Chief Counsel Peg Trent, and I appreciate both of them. I appreciate former county manager Mike Press, who gave me the opportunity to be director for those years. And I've just, when I came to the county, it was kind of a big career move for me. I was 50 years old, and I love local government, and I love the law, and I saw this job as a good combination of those two loves. And after 23 years, I can say that was a good career move. It's been a pleasure, and it's been a pleasure serving with wonderful county commissioners over the years, including all of you, great county managers, and great employees, department heads, and especially my colleagues in the legal department, many of whom are here this morning, and thank you for that. It's been a great career. You'll probably see me around a little bit going forward, but less frequently. So I do plan to, fortunately, and some advice for all of you, don't delay all your travel plans until retirement, but I do have a lot of trips planned. So thank you. I may have a few more words to say this afternoon.
Okay.
But thank you all very much.
There will be a reception.
And for those of interested, there will be a reception this afternoon between 2:00 and 4:00 downstairs in room 201. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much. I do have one unusual item this morning before we begin the public comment period. Excuse me. Last week, the Committee of the Whole made a recommendation to the Commission to consider this week, which was in regards to the sheriff's pay plan. That unfortunately did not get added to the agenda this morning, which we need to add to the agenda at this point. Secondly, there needs to be additional work done on that pay plan, and so the second motion I will ask for, once it's on the agenda, is to continue that item until next week. Mr. Thompson, you have any comment to make?
I do, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and I appreciate the Board's consideration of adding this and then delaying it for one week. The sheriff is here with us this morning. He and I talked this morning, and I think mutually agree. Unfortunately, we are not prepared to bring an action before the Board for consideration this morning. Part of what we have contemplated and discussed with the Board last week was the conversion from a merit system to a step plan. That may sound pretty straightforward, but actually is pretty complicated in getting that developed and figuring out how existing employees fit on that new step plan. Also, the action that will be before the Board, the technical action, is to approve pay tables. That takes a bit of time to get that completed as well. Final comment would say, I continue, quite frankly, to be optimistic that there is some possibility of reaching some mutually agreeable solution to this dilemma that we find ourselves in. And to speak specifically about that, we know that we have allocated beyond just the salary expense in the sheriff's office, additional pay for sign-on retention bonuses. I think there is the potential of looking at already allocated resources and just using them differently that may get us to, again, a mutually agreeable position. So I am optimistic and would respectfully ask for another week to continue to work with the sheriff and his staff on this issue.
Okay. Ms. Allenbrand, the first motion would be to add it to our agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve to add an item to the action agenda pertaining to the civil service pay plan modification for 2022 and 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to add it to our agenda today. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I want to echo Maury's optimism. I think that the middle ground of 2850 is a doable plan, and by reallocating those bonuses as Maury was speaking about, I am very concerned that this was not part of the budget process for 2023 and that this is an add-on, and it's been obvious for months that we were heading towards a crisis situation. In January, our vacancies for deputies was 23. It is now, the last I saw, 69. It may be higher. And I was out in Stillwell yesterday talking to some folks. There's two car dealerships out there, used car dealerships, and they are being hit hard with vandalism, thefts. Catalytic converters are being cut off of trucks and other automobiles. It's a mess. And here we are, 69 deputies down, and we are being, in my opinion, slow in responding to this issue, and that this should have been addressed in our budget discussions. Thank you.
Are you in favor of adding this to the agenda?
Yes, I am.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. Seven votes in favor to add the item to the agenda. I now need a motion to continue that item for one week.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Allenbrand?
I move to continue the item to the next business meeting of September 29, 2022.
Commissioner Faust, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Faust seconded the motion to continue the item for one week. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
Again, I would encourage everyone involved to really look at the numbers, and that the 2850, which the sheriff indicates will most likely work, is where we should be really focusing our efforts instead of having a huge division within this county because public safety is number one, and we just cannot, we cannot afford to have this kind of divide within our community.
For every one of us on this dais, public safety is number one and will continue to be. For those of us who have been in service for decades, that continues to be our number one priority. So thank you very much. Is there any further comments on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. The item will be continued until next week. At this time, next item, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If we do have a virtual comment or two, and to those in person, your comment need to be limited to two minutes. For those in person, there is a modem on the podium which you can track your time. If you exceed the two-minute limit, then the Chair is required to ask you to conclude your remarks. So the first speaker.
We have virtually Debbie Detmer. Debbie Detmer.
Hello, I am Debbie Detmer of Shawnee, and many others and myself wish we could be in person, standing with the people seated in front of you today. I watched your meeting with the sheriff Hayden, and the sheriff told you what he needed. But of course, the five of you offered a vote with a low-ball number for his wages as you focused on the one-time bonus allowance. Charlotte O'Hara suggested a compromise of 2850 and no sign-on bonus, which the sheriff indicated would work. Again, you five voted defund the sheriff department by declining the compromise and staying with your low-ball numbers. The pay per hour is important, and the Board of Commissioners does not and has not been acting in the best interest of the people of Johnson County. You have forced families to the streets with shutdowns. You have forced mental decline and suicides with the COVID mitigations, and you have decreased the safety of the people by defunding through underfunding of the sheriff department. You five county commissioners and this management team are derelict in your duties to the people and sheriff Hayden's department. Public safety is number one, and you should act like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
At this time, Cassie Walworth is not on virtually. If she appears in a little while, I will go back to her.
Okay.
Now we have Frank Moley. Frank Moley.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Frank Moley, unincorporated, Johnson County. So many topics for two minutes amid this den of snakes that I have to go through. We can start with the farm equipment incident on 199th and Cedar Niles last night that shut down the road. I understand no one was injured, thank God, yet you all want to say that this road is safe for semis. We can talk about the lies that Bob Ford and Ed Ilert continue to ignore, that Ms. Allenbrand spoke on the record. Ed says it's been dealt with, but ignoring and whitewashing isn't dealing with the intent-driven deception. Instead, I want to talk about something else pressing. You are planning on adding a shoulder to parts of 199th, which is much needed. They are moving utilities as part of this, which is understandable. What isn't being done, however, is taking this opportunity to get actual broadband in this area that has zero terrestrial options. County tax documents continue to state, despite my objection, that we have two options. The reality is, we have no terrestrial options. I'm speaking to you over Starlink today. You can actually finally do something good for the people you constantly ignore, except, of course, when you need money. Why are gas, water, and electric services all moving and improving infrastructure but no broadband? You have a perfect opportunity to run dark or light fiber as part of this work. I guess we just have to keep shelling out massive amounts of property taxes while you cram trucks down our throats, spend money we don't have, condone deception by commissioners and bureaucrats, continue to not fund the only law enforcement that serves us, all while ignoring our needs. Pay our deputies and stop with the politics. We all know you don't like the sheriff. Get over it or run against him. Get broadband services to us while you are working on this road. At least do
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Now we have Ben Hobart. Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. 400 doctors and professionals from over 34 countries have declared an international medical crisis due to COVID vaccine injuries and deaths. The statement was released at a press conference called by doctors from across India on September 10. Part of the declaration states, "The large number of deaths in previously healthy young people who were inoculated with these quote 'vaccines' is particularly worrying, as is the high incidence of miscarriages and perinatal deaths which have not been investigated. A large number of adverse side effects, including hospitalizations, permanent disabilities, and deaths related to the so-called COVID-19 vaccines, have been reported officially." Examining the reports on CDC's VAERS, the UK's Yellow Card System, the Australian Adverse Event Monitoring System, Europe's Udra Vigilance System, and the WHO's VIGA Access Database to date, there have been more than 11 million reports of adverse effects and more than 70,000 deaths correlated to the inoculation of the products known as quote "COVID vaccines." We know that these numbers just about represent between 1% and 10% of all events. The declaration calls for a worldwide stop to the national inoculation campaigns with the products, implementation of early detection programs of cardiovascular events which could lead to sudden deaths with analysis such as D-dimer and troponin, and implementation of numerous other investigatory and compensatory programs for clot-shot victims. Meanwhile, crickets from this board, which continues to act as drug pushers for Big Pharma regardless of the adverse health consequences of the clot shots to citizens of Johnson County and our youth. Think about it, Johnson Countyans. Why are Mr. Ariola, Chairman Ilert, and the Joko Health Department not warning you of the adverse effects of the clot shots? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, next person.
Now we have Daniel Renaud. Daniel Renaud.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for the opportunity.
Good morning.
Again, my name is Daniel Renaud. I'm a 26-year resident of Shawnee or Johnson County. I've been there a long time, seen a lot of things happen. I fully support Calvin Hayden as sheriff. He does a great job, period, and so does his people. Talking to my neighbors, they feel the same way, and I know a lot of my neighbors. And we don't always agree politically, but they like Sheriff. The latest number I heard about loss of personnel from his department, deputies, is 79, not 69. Those numbers keep going up. We're losing it. They've had to transfer frontline deputies to the jail. They don't have the people because they don't have the money, and it's just that straightforward. I don't care what you got to do. I don't care what's on your agenda. This should be number-one priority. I've seen the crime. We talked about the car dealerships that got tore up. I've lived out there for 26 years, and I've seen the crime coming, and it's coming all the time, and it's not going to get any better. As you well know, crime is up around the country. You've got the money. Let's get it done. You're putting our citizens at risk by not doing it, and that's just as straight as it can be. Another thing I want to talk about just briefly is no more voting machines in Johnson County. Paper ballots only. The voting machines have not been certified since 2017. Clean up the voter rolls. There's over, there's right at 100,000 people on the voter rolls that shouldn't be there. Johnson County is using both out-of-state and out-of-country organizations to count our votes. Now how fair will that be? We need to go paper only, and I'll stop it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now we have Judy Jackson. Judy Jackson.
Can I do one more thing real quick?
Yes, please.
What's the point?
For people in this audience from the Johnson Sheriff's Department, would you please stand? Johnson County Sheriff's Department people, stand.
All right, okay. All right, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Judy Jackson, and I'm here because I've lived in Johnson County for 26 years, and I'm asking for paper ballots only during this coming, upcoming election. The election machines need to be destroyed and gotten rid of. They are incorrect. And so as a citizen of Johnson County, I'm requesting that to be so.
Thank you.
Now we have Low Field.
It's marvelous to live in America because we have a voice, and thank you for meeting and allowing us to come and express our views. And as a citizen, we would appreciate you not just listening, but acting. And I'm here because I'm humiliated and ashamed because we are, I think, the wealthiest county in Kansas, very wealthiest county in Kansas, and we have a sheriff that is a good man, responsible, honorable, and he is 40% underfunded nationally. Underfunded in a wealthy county, the wealthiest in Kansas, and how can that be? How can that be that he's understaffed and underfunded? Are we against law enforcement? Do we have a negative view? As a citizen, I don't think so, and I don't think you do. But As a citizen, I don't think so. And I don't think you do. But I'm concerned about you, respectfully concerned about the commissioners, because there should be unanimity. There should be a united focus. What is it, a political issue? I don't know. I think you need to reconcile your differences on funding our sheriff and his department. And I'm just one of many, many people that are frowning and perplexed. So you really need to come to some unity quickly and not pass it to the next week or the next week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Voila. Now we have Josso Anderson. Josso Anderson.
Excuse me, I could not read the writing.
My writing is atrocious. That's why I'm wearing shorts. I don't understand the resistance of the commission in funding the police, the sheriff. Commissioner Hanslick, last time I was here, you commented that there had been an increase in the budget. Well, first of all, it's infinitesimally small, and it all went to administration. But you didn't mention that. Also, when I was here a few weeks ago, as others have said, there were a shortage of fifty-three officers. Commissioner O'Hara mentioned today it's sixty-nine. Well, that was yesterday. Today it's seventy-nine. When we come a couple weeks from now, will it be a hundred? There's an allocation of five-hundred. And if you're a hundred down or seventy-nine down, how do you protect the community? Chairman Eilert, you commented that public safety is number one. It doesn't you're not illustrating that. I sincerely hope that this hasn't become too political. I think the issue is not so much against the police, the sheriff's office. It's against and pointed towards the sheriff. That's embarrassing. Please fund the sheriff.
Thank you.
Now we have Steve Snitz. Steve Snitz.
Steve Snitz, Prairie Village. I'm going to thank you for the opportunity. I had some words, but I'm going to change that because of this gentleman's indication that he is working with the sheriff. The sheriff is my point man. I think we've heard enough criticism, but if the sheriff indicates that there is a workable solution, that works for me. Okay, it's really interesting to read the media, watch the media, and listen to everybody talking. Everyone knows why we're losing deputies, except the guy who is in charge of it all. No one listens to him. But he is the manager in charge of this, and I listen to him, and I believe what he says. So whatever is worked out a week from now or during this week of negotiation, or however you want to describe it, I look to the sheriff to approve it in the sense that, in his management ability of this operation, he is agreeing with something that he believes will stem the tide and retain existing deputies and be able to hire new deputies for career positions. That's really what the solution has to be. It doesn't matter that somebody goes waving to the microphone. We provided money. You know, it's not about providing money, it's about how. And this gentleman who is working with Cal mentioned how. Thank you for doing that. Okay, so I think we're good to go till next week, and I'm looking forward to the vote next week. Any vote except five to two is acceptable. Five to two is not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Maria Holliday. Maria Holliday.
Good morning. My name is Maria Holliday. I live in Overland Park, District Four. This past May fifth, this commission voted to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure for a study to see if their county salaries were competitive, even though that information is freely available online. Last week, my current Commissioner Hanslick made a statement during the Thursday morning meeting about the importance of keeping salaries competitive so that the county could continue to provide the services that citizens expect. Despite these actions and statements, the B.O.C.C. is currently refusing to fully fund the sheriff's department. I have been in these meetings and heard the discussions about salary discrepancies between the sheriff's department and surrounding city police departments. We have heard the duties these officers perform throughout Johnson County. There's been a lot of press directed at our sheriff recently. Commissioner Hanslick's on record recommending at the charter meeting that we appoint our sheriff like they do in Seattle, Washington. This crisis that we as a county are facing right now should have nothing to do with personal feelings about the sheriff. Our deputies put their lives on the line for us daily. Their families pray for their safety as they head out the door. This is not a political issue. This is a public safety issue. You have the funds to do this. We the people gave them to you. Funds for projects like an amphitheater and signage for time capsules in the Olahtha Square could be redirected to solve this problem. How much is our safety worth? Your number-one job, as you said, is to ensure the safety of our community. Continually delaying to give the sheriff's department the funding required to fill and retain positions is a dereliction of duty to the people who elected you. Please put personal vendettas aside. Johnson Countyans are watching and will recognize political stunts at their expense. Do the right thing, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Phil Bauer. Phil Bauer.
Good morning. My name's Phil Bauer. I'm in Leewood in the First District. And I'm not a real big fan of spending money unless it's absolutely essential. And keeping our county safe from crime is absolutely essential. That's why it's important to fully fund the sheriff's department. Like Steve Snitz mentioned, thank you for developing a solution to this problem that we have. I really hope that works out, and I really hope that you work hard to find that solution. And like Maria Holliday mentioned, keep in mind, this isn't a partisan issue. It's a safety issue. It's about keeping our streets, our homes, and our children safe from crime. But it's up to you. When it comes time to make a decision, whether that's this week or next week, please make the right decision. Please fully fund the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Joanne Achidi. Joanne Achidi.
Good morning, and thank you for having us. I'm Joanne Achidi. I live in Shawnee. I have two things I'd like to mention this morning. One is the decision made by this commission to limit public speaking to two minutes. That was your decision, not your requirement. You are paid, US commissioners are paid, to be here, to be our representatives. As I understand it, it is your job to listen to our concerns and our comments. You are paid to be here. We are not. We are volunteering. We give of our time to come and share our concerns with you and with our neighbors. I would like to respectfully ask that the time limit for public speaking be increased back to the previous three minutes. At the end of each week, when Commissioner Eilert, Chairman Eilert tells us that he is required to stop us from speaking, that is absolutely at his discretion. I have heard people stand here say, "May I finish my thought?" It is the height of rudeness to interrupt someone and not give them another fifteen seconds to finish their sentence. We can do better. We can absolutely do better. So you are not required. You have that discretion. Please, please re-increase our time to three minutes at least. And finally, I'd like to say in regard to this is regarding property taxes, but also how we spend our money in general. A few weeks ago, I heard Commissioner Hanslick say in regard to the downtown Olahtha project, "It's a million dollars. A million dollars, one way or another, won't affect our property taxes." That's not how I do arithmetic. Every million, every million-dollar project that this council or this commission votes for does impact my property taxes. And at that discussion, there was a wonderful PowerPoint presentation given to show that we've reduced the mills, but we forgot to tell the part-
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Your time is concluded. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bless your heart.
Next speaker.
Now we have Irina Weaver.
Excuse me, Irina Weaver. Irina Weaver.
Irina Weaver, Overland Park.
Can you get closer to the mic? I can't hear you.
Irina Weaver, Overland Park. "The purpose of the government is expressed in the preamble of the Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." So what I can see right now, the domestic tranquility is slowly fading away. More examples of break-ins populate social media. So here's one. September thirteenth, I and the person wrote, "I wanted to make neighbors aware that my SUV was stolen out of the driveway last night at midnight. We live in Blackthorne Estates. Please be careful, and let us know if you have a Ring video or any info that might help." Then I had, of course, it's all anecdotal. However, you can see, you can see the repeating itself. You can see the same cases repeating itself. So I had a conversation with a young woman living in, she lives in the Overland Park around Ninety-Fifth Street. So she said, she told me that perpetrators tried to break-ins, break into her car three times. So my question is, what would be your solution to this case, to her case? What, how would you react to that? Well, her reaction, since she doesn't live in upscale enclave surrounded by golf courses, so her solution was installing hidden camera and then buying a road waller. So why us, the taxpayers, have to go to such an extent for the privilege of living in this county?
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you.
Now we have Victoria Klein. Victoria Klein.
Good morning, Victoria Klein, Overland Park. The UN, September first, was, they were looking forward to a thing from China. And it was over, and the reason I found it was on the Victims of Communism Memorial Foundation in Washington, DC. And they have a problem in China that they've been waiting for years, literally, over the bad policing in China. And they finally got it September first, and it has tons of evidence against not only the mutilation of the Uighurs, but many other things. They're on a merit system. And what ended up happening is, is that they're ignoring it. They're the, the UN who begged for them to understand what was going on with bad policing in China, they're ignoring the report. They're not even responding to it. What's interesting is, on the foundation, they also said that we have a constitution of communism that was developed in 2014 in the United States. So they asked the kids of high school to compare the US Constitution with what has been put out in 2014 between the two communisms, I mean, between the two constitutions. And one of the girls wrote, "The main difference that I've noticed studying both constitutions is that our constitutions limits the power and size of the government, while the communist constitution limits the power of the people. The communist sugarcoats and a horrible government under capitalism. With nice words and false promises, nothing will come close to the greatness of our constitution, at least not in our lifetimes. Therefore, we must fight to preserve and protect our liberties given to us by our founding fathers." The point I'm trying to make here is that communism is being, they said at this foundation, is growing rapidly. People are wanting to hold on to it. So this issue with the police is just part of the communist thing. It's not just here. It's a, it's an ideology that is being spread so that it's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, that completes our speakers.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. There are no notes for the record this morning, so we will proceed with our consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda items.
Chairman, there are no items for the consent agenda. We're on a cold agenda.
Thank you for reminding me of that. The first item would be?
Item number one, consider approving the September first, 2022 business session minutes. All were present.
Are there any corrections or additions to be noted? If not, do I hear a motion? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the September first, 2022 business session meetings.
Hanslick second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the minutes as presented. Clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Eilert.
Eilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Item number two.
Consider approving and ratifying the second addendum to the property conveyance agreement between the Board of Directors of the Johnson County Library, JCL, and the City of Marion, providing a site for an approximately fifteen thousand square-foot library facility for the Antioch Library Replacement Project.
Ms. Solentrop.
Good morning.
Congratulations. I think this is the first time you appear before us, before your naming as the librarian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful to be here this morning. Our agenda item for you today, just a little background, the Johnson County Library Board of Directors approved our comprehensive library master plan in early 2015. And then this body approved funding that plan through an increase of point seven-five mills. I bring before you the next project in that plan, the library in Marion, currently known as the Antioch Branch, through a great partnership with the City of Marion. In 2019, both the city and the library approved an MOU to start off that partnership and this project. In 2019, you all approved the capital plan, capital improvement plan, which included Antioch as a replacement project. In mid-2019, the property conveyance for that land was approved by both parties and ratified by this body. And we've since had a first addendum brought to this body and approved by both parties. And I have before you the second addendum. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, questions. Ms. O'Hara.
Yes, reading through the briefing sheet, I see that the cost, the amount of thirteen million, six hundred and eighty thousand and ninety-four to design, equip, and construct the library in Marion, the Antioch. Are we still on budget?
We are. And actually, we have done a pre-bid, fifty percent, just to see the market value, test that out, and we are on budget. We expect that final bid in October.
And when was this number come up with? When was this estimate made?
Several years ago, like three years ago, two years ago, just approximately several? I would say in the last two years.
In the, okay, in the last two years. So, and you think that you are going to come in on budget?
Correct.
Could you come and work for some other department? You seem to have a wonderful touch because we are seeing such inflationary pressures. So has there been modifications, or is this to, to, to give a reason that the budget, that this is coming in on budget?
We have a great partnership with our partners in county facilities, and we work very closely with them along the design process. Our pattern and our history with all of our buildings has been to come in on or under- buildings has been to come in on or under budget and on time. So that's what we really strive for.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fast.
Yes. Can you talk a little bit about, with Marion, they, the parking garage, didn't they provide that? And they provided the land. I mean, so Marion, part of this agreement, it was very much a collaborative.
You're correct. It was very much a collaborative partnership that we've been working on probably since maybe mid-18, working with the city manager and the deputy city manager. We have a shared parking agreement, so we do pay toward the maintenance, those types of things. It's a similar agreement that we have with the City of Lenexa, when we went to that campus concept with that city. So we're replicating all those good things that we learned there.
You had earlier said ribbon cutting, end of the year. Has that been delayed, or is that still on target?
Groundbreaking. We're looking at-
I mean groundbreaking, not ribbon cutting.
We're looking at, yeah, toward the end of this year.
Yeah.
We're good, but we're not that good.
Yeah. Yo, woo-hoo.
Groundbreaking toward the end of this year.
And I will say that I know residents in the Northeast are very excited. We're very excited about the energy efficiency, the green roof. It will be very innovative and leading the way. So, and I will make the motion when we're ready.
Okay, Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Commissioner Fast, thank you for talking about the partnership, because it's, it's a great thing to do, is to partner with our cities. And also, I want to congratulate you on your event. It was a lot of fun. There was a lot of community involvement, and it was very well done. So, thank you.
Thank you all for attending.
Other questions? All right. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? If not, is back before the commission, Commissioner Fast, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move to approve and ratify the second addendum to the property convenience agreement between the Board of Directors of the Johnson County Library and the City of Marion.
Hanslick second.
Fast made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the amendment as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. Motion carried. Item number three.
Resolution number 072-22, consider City of Gardner application number FP-22-08, final plat for New Trails North Second Plat, located on the southwest corner of 175th Street and New Trails Parkway, Gardner, Kansas, and located within one mile of New Century Air Center.
Ms. Wicklund.
Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. The subject property is located near the southwest corner of 175th Street and west of Claire Road, as shown here on the vicinity map. It is located within the City of Gardner and is located within one mile of the New Century Air Center. This application is before you for review of airport compatibility. This request is for a City of Gardner application for a final plat for four commercial lots to be known as New Trails North Second Plat. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. And this is a copy of the final plat. The subject property is located within the airport interest area, but it's not located within the flight corridor or the noise impact areas. There were no members of the public that spoke on this application at the Airport Commission meeting, and planning staff recommends approval. The Airport Commission held a public hearing on this item and recommended approval with stipulations and had no concerns with the application. With that, I can stand for questions, and the applicant, I believe, is also present.
Again, this comes before us because of the proximity to the airport. The City of Gardner has approved it.
That's correct.
And the Airport Commission has also given their okay. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments they'd like to make?
Good morning. My name is Mark Brewer with Schlegel. We're the design engineer for the developer, the project, ground development. I don't have anything to add to staff's presentation and stand for any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions of the applicant?
I'm just ready with-
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone, excuse me, Ms. O'Hara, did you have a question, or?
I just, you know, continually, I just want to caution us on the development around our airports, because they are a valuable asset. And I appreciate the city and the Airport Commission studying this, and that they have assured that, assured us that this will not impede operations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right, if not, it's the sixth district. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a comment that the airport takes development around the airport very seriously, and they look at all safety issues. So that is one thing that's at the top of their list when they're working and, and they approve these with planning. I move to adopt resolution number 072-22, approving a final plat for New Trails North Two Plat, located at the southwest corner of 175th Street and New Trails Parkway, Gardner, Kansas, for the reasons and subject to speculations as recommended by the Airport Commission.
Doyer second.
Hanslick second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the application and the plat as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number four, resolution number 070-22, consider City of Overland Park application number PLT 2022-00038, for a final plat for 43 single-family residential lots on 16.84 acres, to be known as Century Farms Fifth Plat, located near the southwest corner of 167th Street and Quivera Road, Overland Park, Kansas, and located within one mile of the Johnson County Executive Airport.
Ms. Wicklund.
Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. The subject property is located near the southwest corner of 167th Street and Quivera Road, as shown here on the vicinity map. It is also located within the City of Overland Park and is located within one mile of the Executive Airport. This application is before you also for review of airport compatibility. This request is for a City of Overland Park application for a final plat for 43 residential lots to be known as Century Farms Fifth Plat. Here is an aerial view of the subject property, also showing the previous phases of the Century Farms subdivision. This map shows the, the property in relationship to the airport, and shows that the subject property is outside the airport interest area. It is outside the flight corridor and also outside of the noise impact areas. And this is the final plat drawing. There were no members of the public that spoke on this application at the Airport Commission meeting. Planning staff recommends approval, and the Airport Commission held a public hearing on this item and recommended approval with stipulations and had no concerns with the application. And with that, I can stand for questions, and the applicant is also present.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, the city and the Airport Commission have approved this. Questions of the applicant, of the staff? Is the applicant present? Any comments they'd like to make?
Again, Mark Brewer with Schlegel, design consultant for the developer, and I don't have anything to add and stand for any questions you might have.
Questions of the applicant? Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? If not, it's back before the commission. Ms. O'Hara, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 070-22, approving a final plat for 43 residential lots to be known as Century Farms Fifth Plat, located within one mile of the Johnson County Executive Airport for the reasons and subject to the stipulations as recommended by the Airport Commission.
Doyer second.
Myers second.
O'Hara made the motion. Myers seconded the motion to approve the application of the City of Overland Park in regards to the zoning request that's been approved by all parties. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. Motion carried. I have seven votes in favor. Item number five.
Chairman, it has been requested to read item number five and six into the record together for discussion, and then we will, would need separate motions. Item number five, consider approving the 2023 County Assistance Road System program expenditures in an amount not to exceed $17,248,000. And item number six, consider approving the 2023 Stormwater Management Program expenditures in an amount not to exceed $17,116,000.
Mr. Leage.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good to see you, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're one of our longtime employees who's coming close to retirement.
Five days, but who's counting?
Five days. Well, how long has it been that you've been on our staff?
24 years.
24 years. Guys, well, thank you very much for your service. And so, anyway, thank you for being here this morning, and we're interested in your report.
Thank you. And it's all about the people, the last 24 years being here with the county. And I would like to start out with recognizing both staff and cities in attendance today supporting the Stormwater Management Program and the County Assistance Road System or CARS program. So at a staff level, we have Lee Kellenberger, who will present next on the Stormwater Program. He's our program manager. We have Heather Schmidt, who's our project manager. Sarah Smith is our senior water, or senior stormwater engineer. Ian Fannin Hughes, who I didn't know owned a suit, he's our field, water quality specialist, field guy. So I see him in field garb all the time, and he, he had a tie, and I said, "You want to borrow my clip-on?" He said, "No, I have one that actually ties." So Ian's our newest employee. And then Martin Tangira is our planning engineer, works with planning office directly on incorporated Johnson County planning items. And then also, we have a number of city representatives in attendance. We have Bill Sogstad with Fairway, Beth Wright with the City of Olathe, Celia, oh, there you go, Celia Duran with City Mission, Cliff Spiegel with Prairie Village, Tony Hoffman with Overland Park, Lauren Snyder, Shawnee, Kevin Manning, Shawnee, Jackie Messer, Spring Hill, and Tom Jacobs with the City of Lenexa. So they're all here supporting the two programs. Several of the city representatives would like to have a chance to speak after Lee has done with his presentation. So-
All right, thank you.
You bet. So with that, I'll start with the County Assistance Road System or CARS program. The proposed expenditures of $17,248,000 will fund 21 projects in 13 cities. These expenditures are in compliance with CARS policy and administrative procedures and are also in compliance with county policy. These come to you with the recommendation of, excuse me, the Technical Review Committee, or TRC, which is a, includes representatives from the cities, voting representatives from cities in Johnson County. And, and that was at their September 7th meeting. So our vision and mission statements, I just wanted to show those up, show you these quickly, that these are where we try, where we, our goals of where we want to be and how we want to get there. And these are newer vision and mission statements that we've created here in the recent past, and, and are very proud of them, and, and want to be focused on them. So our funding for the 2023 CARS program, our traditional two sources, the gas tax or the special city-county highway fund, and those are funds received from the state of Kansas for the sale of fuel throughout the state of Kansas. And then our county support at .343 mil, comes from, directly from the county and gives us our total estimated revenue of $17,248,000. The 21 projects submitted by the 13 cities, total project, request for funding came in at just under $23 million. And as a result of our estimated revenue, we need, we made cuts of approximately $5.6 million to these 21, to 13 cities and 21 projects, several of them. We expect this to continue as development and economic growth continues throughout, throughout Johnson County. So we had this happen last year. It's happening this year. We believe it'll be, probably is going to be a consistent theme, where we're going to be making cuts based on those two funding sources. Nine of the 13 cities, funding was cut from a maximum of 50% funding of the project costs to approximately 30% to 35% funding. So we did have some, what we consider significant cuts to, to meet the needs of the city's projects. Those funding cuts are made based on the TRC's developed 80% rule. I won't go into detail on it, but suffice it to say, it's based on a city's population and assessed valuation to determine a theoretical apportionment of this, of the CARS funding. And the 80% rule requires that over a five-year rolling window, each city will receive at least 80% of its theoretical apportionment. And nine of the 13 cities did receive a reduced funding because of the use of the 80% rule. Next three slides are going to list the 21 projects recommended for funding. Additional details included in the expenditure packet that is included in the, with the briefing sheet. 16 of these projects are considered major maintenance, so primarily mill and overlay. Four projects are considered capacity. Three are making significant improvements to what have been unimproved county arterial roads. And one is, we consider it a missing link. It's the extension of 119th Street in the City of Olathe. And then we have one project in the City of Lenexa, which is considered system management, because they're doing significant intersection work as well as traffic signalization. There were seven additional projects that were submitted in addition to these 21, but because of the budget constraints, those seven projects were not included as recommend, as being recommended for funding in 2023. So finally, excuse me, a map showing the location of the 21 projects throughout Johnson County. As a reminder, the CARS program funds 50% of eligible construction costs. Projects are, from time to time, funded at less than 50%, either because of ineligible costs, receipt of state and federal funding, or as in the case this year, implementation of the 80% rule to, because of funding limitations. So our $17,248,000 represents about 15% of the $110 million worth of construction activity in Johnson County for 2023. And that's a significant amount of work leveraged, in part by the CARS program. And although we, as I mentioned earlier, we continue to see funding to be a challenge for us, we believe the CARS program remains relevant and is a very important catalyst for the maintenance and, and improvements to the transportation network in Johnson County. I can either answer questions now or wait till after Lee.
Okay. Questions of Ms. O'Hara?
I have two quick questions. Are we seeing a fall, a reduction of revenue from the, the sales tax on fuel, or is that, is that remaining robust?
I wouldn't say robust. I don't think, Mark, it hasn't been declining. Is Mark that?
So we have, within the last 10 years from the state, there's been modest growth in the gas tax, but not nearly to the extent that the ad valorem generated-
Okay.
-revenue has grown.
All right. Thank you. And then just, this is, this is curiosity on my point, part. 119th Street, the missing link, will that, will that require a railroad crossing?
Yes.
Or is that going to be an overpass, or?
All of the above. And, and, Olathe will be, that's part of the, one of the talks, one of the presentations by the City of Olathe will talk about that project.
Okay, so they're, they're going to do an overpass on that section?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Hara, thank you for your question. I'd like to frame it a little differently. There's been a growing interest and movement to promote electric car use, and obviously, electric cars do not use gasoline. I was wondering what the current projections are. I believe there are some fairly significant initiatives coming forward to encourage electric car usage. And as that increases, the potential impact on gas tax escalates. And what are our plans, or are there discussions going on in terms of how to address that pending funding gap?
Since the gas tax comes to us from the state, the state is- Since the gas tax comes to us from the state, the state is, is, my understanding from, from some conversations, the state is looking at how to manage the future with more electric cars. But, so we, Johnson County, are not doing anything directly. We are in conversation with the state to find out if and what plans they have to hopefully offset the issue associated with fuel decrease, potential decreased fuel sales in the state.
Okay, thank you. One follow-on, Mr. Chairman. In your mission statement, and I've asked this question in yours past, and I appreciate the effort that you all put into updating the mission expectations for this program, but you stayed in there advancing state-of-the-practice transportation concepts. And one area that I keep reading about that has a potential impact, both in efficiency of the system and efficiency in fuel consumption, is the use of AI, artificial intelligence, to help move traffic through congested communities. And I realize our congestion is not as bad as some, but we are becoming more congested, for lack of a better term. So are there discussions going on, either in Johnson County globally, or specifically within cities that have looked at AI and how it might improve the efficiency of the system?
So I would term it more as just the use of technology, not just specific to AI. And so many of the cities are investing and looking at technology advancements to assist with, assist the traveling public. Many of our projects, not so much mill and overlay, but the capacity improvements and other projects, we do fibers run, and that's the key factor to technology, 5G also, but having fiber to our traffic signals and just fiber run in general is a very important part of having technology available. So the answer is yes. But, and we started a group, excuse me, prior to COVID, and we have not restarted that group again, specific to talk about intelligent transportation and the use of technology.
Could you do that before you leave?
I've got that on today. I'm going to invite you.
Thank you. Ms. Sandsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Commissioner Ashcraft's questions, and I just wanted to mention that these are all conversations that we've been having at the Total Transportation Policy Committee with the Mid-America Regional Council. And on a personal note, I have to thank you, Mr. Leage, for always being on those meetings, you and Jeff Voss, very helpful to be able to follow up with you and confirm what's, what, where Johnson County fits in on some of these issues. So thank you, I appreciate that. I will miss you there.
You're welcome, thank you.
But I wanted to mention, first of all, about the gas tax. We have had presentations from KDOT regarding discussions around a road use tax, because there is the expectation that we will have more electric vehicles coming to our Kansas roads. In fact, the Kansas and Missouri have both been, both been approved for funding. In Kansas, it's about 40 million for something called the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program that will allow us to build, for the state, to build electric vehicle charging stations across the state on major highways. And so there is the expectation and that that will allow more people to feel better about purchasing an electric vehicle and knowing they can charge across the state. The other, the other part, you mentioned about technology, and you may have, Mr. Leage may have more information, but there's something called a green light project that uses technology to, throughout the metro area, to allow timing of stoplights to be such that people keep moving, you don't have cars idling as much, and Mr. Leage may have more to add to that. But I did want to say, those conversations are occurring at the TTPC.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you as well. I'm fully support of these programs, and I think it's a great way to have partnerships to work together, so I look forward to the presentations. Thank you.
Ms. Fast.
Yes, you know, I have 11 cities in my district, and whenever they have questions, you know, I let you know, and you get right back. I just, you know, this program is so critical to small cities. Johnson Drive was just completed in downtown Mission, and it just looks amazing, and I don't know what we're going to do without you. It just, you've been just, you know, the definition of a public servant, and, and I just can't thank you enough for leading this program forward, and your expertise, and I don't know how we can ever fill your shoes.
Well, I'm leaving you in better hands with Lee Kellenberger and Sarah and Heather. And I will tell you, money is what makes this, makes this program happen, but it's our staff and the city staff that make it successful. The city staff can operate without us, we can't operate without the cities, so it's a team effort. Appreciate your comments, but I just happen to be the spokesperson, and everybody else is doing the work.
No, no. You're, you've been incredible leader.
All right, thank you. Other, other questions? Ms. Sandsley.
Yes, I just wanted to add, I'm not sure that everybody is familiar with how the CARS program works, and I just wanted to point out how important it is in ensuring that our major roads in Johnson County are maintained, even if parts of them go through smaller cities. This, this allows us all to share the cost of that, rather than just burden the city with maintaining a major artery through their city. So it's, it's, it's a very equitable program that allows us all to be able to continue to have great, great roads.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? I assume there are some city reps who would like to speak?
They'll do that after, after Lee presents.
Pardon?
They'll, they'll have their presentations, or they're, come up and talk after Lee's presentation.
Very good. So do we wait until we conclude the second item before we vote?
That's what we've done in the past.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Kellenberger with the Stormwater Management Program, and I will now present to you our 2023 proposed expenditures for stormwater. Similar to CARS, these expenditures, before you today, have been prepared in accordance with our policies and procedures, and come to you with a full recommendation of the Stormwater Management Advisory Council. I wanted to take a quick second to refresh everyone's memory on the, on the source of this funding. So this is a sales tax generated, the revenue for this program is generated from a countywide 10th of a cent retail sales tax. It was adopted or approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 1990 after the Kansas Legislature authorized counties to adopt the tax for the purposes of flood, flood control. We've been operation, in operation ever since, and together, SMAC and this county stormwater staff work together to make recommendations on the expenditures of that revenue. Our vision and mission were also updated in 2016 as part of our strategic plan update. Our vision is our, you know, our guiding principles and, and really helps guide our decision-making process, and our vision is, or our mission statement is what our overall goal is and what kind of services we provide. Moving on to the expenditures, at the top, this ta, this slide is really intended to give you an overview of our entire program. At the top, you'll see the funds available for the program. The first line is our estimated revenue that's, will be generated from that 10th of a cent sales tax at 18.1 million. The next two lines are additional funding that we have to, coming to the program in 2023. The available fund balance is actually, represents excess revenue that we expect to, that we have received in 2021 and that we are expected to receive in 2022. So revenues for sales are coming in quite a bit higher than what was projected by our Budget Office. So that's where that 8.3 million is coming from. The 6.3 million below that is previous years unencumbered funds. That's money that came into the program for various projects or programs but was not expended. A lot of that has kind of a lag due to COVID over the last several years. We, we, that's where that fund is. So the total funds available is shown here, 32.7 million, which is about twice of what has been available to our program on an average year. At the bottom, you'll see what the proposed expenditures are for 2023. We have planning and support projects budgeted at 3.6 million, system management projects budgeted at about 4.5 million, and watershed improvement projects budgeted at about 8 million. The remaining 5% is budgeted for administrative services, which covers our staff salaries, support to other county departments, and operating expenses. So overall, 95% of the programs' expected revenue is going back to the cities and is part of various projects or programs. At the bottom, you can see our remaining fund balance. We typically like to keep this at, at or below 5%. As you can see, it's much higher this year, but due to the reasons we stated. But as you'll see at the end of my presentation, we don't feel that they'll have, we have a large list of projects already identified in need for the program, so that funding will, will be programmed out into the coming years and before you, and in subsequent years. So the next slide, I'll go through these fairly quickly. They go a little more detail of various different program, parts of our program. Planning and support, budgeted at 3.6 million. This is for ongoing studies and implementation efforts with our strategic plan, budgeted at 1.5. And below that, you'll see several other ongoing efforts with the cities, our regional and R and D program, and several, or a couple of agreements with the City of Overland Park for our ongoing stormwatch program and USGS stream gauging. Next is our system management program. This is the fourth year we're funding this program, and it is intended to assist cities with their asset replacement of aging infrastructure. It's been a very successful program. In the last four years, we've had, I believe, 16 different cities participate, so it's been well-received. We pay, we pay for both condition assessment, which we have budgeted at 500,000, and actual system replacement, and it's an in-kind replacement program to replace failing infrastructure. For 2023, we have 18 different projects, as shown here on the map, dispersed throughout the county. And then finally is our watershed improvement projects, $650,000 budget for NPDS Phase II support. This is a very popular program. We help the cities satisfy a lot of the requirements for their, and their water quality permits for reporting to the state. Below that is budgeted, funds budgeted at 1.5 million for two relatively new programs, first being our water quality improvement program and our new home buyout program. And then finally, 4.5 million budgeted for our flood risk reduction projects. These are shown on this map here in 2023. We have five different projects budgeted, are shown in four different cities. This, this program, these funds are used to help alleviate flood, mitigate flood, flood damages throughout the county. And finally, the last two slides here are anticipated need, are currently identified need. This is our five-year preliminary funding plan for system management. We currently have five projects on this list, and the years that the cities have identified, which they plan to proceed with those projects. This list will continue to change. We, we, we get typically 15 to 20 applications every year for this program, so this list will, will change significantly. But currently, the identified need is about 5 million. And then the last slide here is our five-year preliminary funding plan for our flood risk reduction projects. We have quite a few more projects identified, those on this list, as well as one large project that you'll see is a project in Upper Turkey Creek in Merriam, which is a significant project for the City of Merriam and one that we've been working on for a long time. So the total need identified here to the program share would be 41 million. So with that, I will stop and ask if there's any questions for the Stormwater Program.
Lee, you may have stated this, but these recommendations come to us from the Stormwater Management Group. Is that right?
That's correct. The Stormwater Management Advisory Council, which is comprised of one voting representative of all, of all the 20.
Right, okay, thank you. Questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So have you purchased your new shoes, the bigger shoes?
I don't know if they sell them big enough to fill them.
Just a question, the, the Gardner spillway, is that Gardner, that Gardner Lake?
Yeah.
I was just curious.
That, that fifth project there, or that bottom project on this list, is the Gardner Lake spillway project. The City of Gardner did submit an application for improvements to that spillway. They have not elected to move forward with that project.
Oh, so Gardner hasn't elected? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. O'Hara.
Couple of questions. The conservation, the Hillsdale Conservation Area, has that been studied with the, this, with your department?
So we are in, and we've been in some meetings, preliminary meetings with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment about developing a, a special watershed protection area for the Hillsdale Lake watershed. And so Gardner, Edgerton, Spring Hill, and ourselves, stormwater and wastewater have been, been involved in those initial discussions, and we're going to continue to meet.
Because that area has, for years, been the Hillsdale Conservation Area, and it seems as though that has been ignored with the annexation of Edgerton's annexation, and then the development of million-square-foot warehouses, and the impact to the Hillsdale Lake, I have not, I know that the conservation area in Miami County is very concerned about it, and I just wanted to make sure that there's conversations going on, that we are serious, if we have a conservation area, that we are serious about this, instead of just ignoring it as this development occurs.
Yeah, we are aware of that, and the state is aware of that, and I think that's why we're moving forward.
Okay, then, then the other question. Large developments like Brick Ridge at 113rd and Antioch, the anticipation, if that does go forward, of apartments, retail, hotel, office buildings, that's going to create a lot of hard surfaces. And I have visited with Overland Park, and I, I have some concerns about the runoff. Has, has the county had any input as to how that's going to impact Indian Creek and the down, down river from that?
The county, we have not had discussions directly with the developer. We have, you know, expressed an opportunity, or, you know, we have made discussions with staff at, at Overland Park, if, if, if and when they wanted to pursue a project in that location, we'd be willing to partner, or at least listen to see if something could be done.
Okay, I would be interested in knowing the developer's participation in those costs, so, but, so if you could kind of put that in the back of your mind.
That, just to be clear, we don't have a project right now.
Well, I know, I know, I know, because that project, as I understand it, has not moved forward, but if and when?
If and when the county would be involved with anything, we will definitely let you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fast.
Yes, on the flood risk reduction projects, and one, my area, I know how Turkey Creek and that Rock Creek to get buildings out of the flood plain.
Yeah.
Turkey Creek, that won't start until we get more federal funding, right?
Correct. We had, Congress authorized an initial installment of 24 million for that project. The Corps of Engineers is involved, they're going to be the lead project investigator on that with the city. Their projected, maybe, actual true cost of that project may be upwards of 45 to 50 million dollars. So if that project were to move forward, there would, it would take additional monies from, from the federal.
How about Rock Creek? I mean, can that be, move forward next year or not?
Well, the city, the cities in Rock Creek are looking at several opportunities for flooding, for street flooding, for home flooding. We just initiated a new study with the City of Mission to look at an area of Rock Creek. And as that project develops, and they bring forward, and they can bring their match to the table, we can get that project going. So we are, we are actually authorized the study already, so as far as design and construction, I think that can start in 2023, if the city's ready to move forward.
Thank you, I know how important that is to the City of Mission. On the replacement and renewal projects, do they have, like, they have to do that in the next year? Do they have three years? How does that work in terms of these system and renewal projects?
Those projects that are shown on this map here, we, they're encouraged to start those in the year the funding is allocated. So those, we anticipate the majority of these, if not all of them, will take place in 2023.
Good. Mr. Ashcraft, do you have a question? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Redone, Commissioner?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Mr. Kellenberger, couple of questions. The, the program began in 1990, so how, how much, what's our total approximately expenditures to date? It's got to be several hundred million dollars, is that?
Yeah, we actually looked that up for the PIO's office recently, and, and we, we estimate conserv- Yeah, we actually looked that up for the PIO's office recently, and we estimate conservatively, I think that the program has generated about, or has invested about 300 million dollars.
300 million, very good. Well, I again commend you for your significant shift in focus in your strategic plan to look at watersheds. But the question that comes up is, before 1990, and maybe which generated the change in the law and the creation of this program, Johnson County suffered any number of devastating floods, and we've put a lot of work and effort into that. The question that comes up is, do we or have we done or continue to do a risk assessment by these watersheds to get some sense that we are making progress? And I realize it's a constantly moving target because as we develop upstream, it has significant impact downstream. But are we making progress and how do we assess that? How do we measure our success? You knew I was going to say that, so.
That's a great, that's a great question, Commissioner. So historically, you know, the program was a municipal-based program, and we really looked at individual cities' needs and focused on helping cities address their needs. So with the adoption of the strategic plan by this board, you know, we really slipped that on its head, and we looked at watershed needs. And so, and we've changed the way we formulate projects and prioritize them to be risk-based. So we are, we now have, I think, some data at hand where we can start to track performance measures based on the alleviated risk. Unfortunately, that's not how we characterize projects for the first 25 years of the program. So we really don't have a tool to measure decreased risk. We have the investments made. There's different ways we can try to enumerate the benefits of the program, and we're continuing to work on ways to express that or to really to, you know, give you a sense of where we're at in the overall story of this program. But I think we, moving forward, we have a much better process in place, I think, to start measuring, characterizing risk. So we have watershed master plans that were recently completed, and those look at the needs of the watershed irrespective of the city boundary. So, and all the watershed-based projects that are prioritized based on risk. So we are trying to incentivize the watershed organizations now to prioritize our investments into those watershed-level projects.
I will be interested in learning more as you go forward, especially in terms of the impact that these, this program has on property loss and lives' loss and how this investment benefits the community. One thought was, as some of these projects are developed and better managed, then potentially the development or redevelopment around those areas may flourish because they don't have the same fear or potential impact that flooding might cause. So I look forward to learning more.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just make this comment, Lee, you and I both attended the Hillsdale District Meeting several months ago.
Yep.
That was authored by the State of Kansas. The cities were there, the county was there, and I think Miami County representatives were also there, along with various state agencies. So that conversation has already begun and continues underway. Is that right?
That's correct. We actually have a meeting coming up next month.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, we'll open up for public comment. Is that correct, Clerk?
Chairman, we have the cities that would like to make a presentation.
Okay. All right. Very good. Cities are welcome.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes on these two great programs and the staffs that support them. I'm Bill Stogsdill. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Fairway, Kansas. I've been there since 2001, so Kent is one of the few people in Johnson County that has a little seniority on me. This is a one-block stretch of Mission Road north of Shawnee Mission Parkway, two-phase project. One phase, we replaced the sidewalk in conjunction with Google to replace fiber underneath it. If you ever get an opportunity to work a construction project with Google, pass. We did the sidewalk, then mill and overlay the other side. It was about a $400,000 project in total, and cars funded 50% of that. This is the construction of the Mission Road Bridge. Kent and I chewed a lot of dirt over this project, about seven-hour-long council meetings that lasted till 2:00 in the morning. There was a lot of public outcry over this project. We replaced a nice quaint little bridge with a functioning bridge that would withstand the 100-year flood. Here it is during the landscape phase. It's completely done. The project total was about $6 million, of which we had about 1.7 million in SMAC funds and another $700,000 in cars funds, and it won the 2009 APWA Project of the Year in the Transportation category, $5 million to $25 million category. It also removed five houses from the floodplain, if you're wanting a measure to see what our risk assessment is doing with these projects. This is the Windsor Box project we did at the same time. Shortly into my tenure as Public Works Director, we decided to take Shawnee Mission Parkway down to two lanes and close Mission Road Bridge, effectively displacing 40,000 cars a day. I was a really, really, really popular person. This project was about $3 million, of which we got about $1.2 million in SMAC funding. This also removed five houses and one business from the floodplain. And we'll move on to Olathe after that, but I just wanted to say, cities in Johnson County rely on these programs. In total, SMAC funding, the City of Fairway has probably received about $11 million in funding, and total in cars, probably about another $3 million in funding. This helps us provide some of our most basic services, which is roads to drive on, infrastructure to keep water off of the streets, and things like that. I do not want to see Kent Laje leave, but I will not lose a bit of sleep knowing that Lee's stepping into those shoes. I've known Lee for a long time, and the programs are going to be in great hands. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Beth Wright, and Nate was not feeling well today, so I'm stepping in for him.
Would you pull the microphone down a little closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Beth Wright, so I am the Deputy Infrastructure Director for the City of Olathe, and we are happy to talk with you about the projects that we will be using cars and SMAC money on. So the first is 119th. This is the Woodland and Northgate Project. So we will be extending 119th Street from Northgate. We will begin with a roundabout over the Mill Creek Trail and BNSF with about an 850-foot bridge, which will connect directly to Woodland. With that increased traffic, we also need to improve some of the intersections that are to the west. So we'll be adding traffic signals at Iowa and 119th Street and 119th Street in Lone Elm. So our cars money next year will be dedicated toward this project. Then we'd like to talk about our Upper Mill Creek Stormwater Improvement. So this is a project that is active, going on. If you go on any street north of Santa Fe, you will run into some of our construction, and you can see the before and after pictures. You also see the new downtown, Olathe Downtown Library that's immediately south of Poplar Street. So this project, when we look at risk reduction, will allow us to remove 33 homes that would be at risk of flooding by doing the Upper Mill Creek project, and it will also minimize the overtopping of Cherry, Prairie, Spruce, Poplar, Water, Woodland, Santa Fe Park, and Lula Streets in the downtown Olathe area. So this is really one of our last significant flood projects. We have another project that we need to do on Indian Creek, but with your help, we've been able to make huge strides and improvements in the downtown area. And then finally, we want to thank you for your dedication to the system management project. So these are some of the corrugated metal pipe that are under our roads in the City of Olathe. On the left, if you look really close, you can see daylight coming through that pipe, and we should never see daylight coming through a stormwater pipe. So these are metal pipes that have been in place for over 30 years, 30 to 40 years, and they have begun to corrode, and we need to replace them. So we really appreciate Lee's foresight with the technical committee of looking at the replacement of these pipes. We've had some collapses under 135th Street over by Brom and then over on 151st Street near Black Bob Park. So we really appreciate you allowing us to get ahead so that we don't have similar concerns in the future. So once again, the City of Olathe, we greatly appreciate the support of the county. We love working with Kent and Lee and the entire staff, and we take any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Spring Hill, I heard some of the words this morning here from you guys, and they're so appropriate, partnership catalysts. And I was coming to talk about some of the projects that Spring Hill has been working on. I think that it's pretty evident that Spring Hill is pretty much growing, and this particular project, the roundabout, is it right in the middle of a school, another middle school going in. It's a very, was a very congested, unsafe area. Everybody hated the idea of a roundabout as normal because nobody wants them until they put them in, and then all of a sudden they say, why were we fighting it? Because it was a great improvement. And this was, actually, I came in the door, this was halfway through, but it's been a tremendous success for Spring Hill. Another project, and like I said, I was walking in in the middle of this one. If anybody had been through Spring Hill and saw the concrete, the cracks down the middle of the road, this project was last year's that went down and sealed all those, cut them out, and put a U-bass coating over top. And again, it's a, it was, the cars project was the catalyst to get this moving forward. And I got, I came from Lynn County. I was there for about five years, and I can say there is no such project anywhere like cars or the stormwater management being utilized to help the cities. And this is, it's just night and day difference between the two areas that I'm working. This is such a tremendous program to help the cities. I wish we were doing it there, but it's not even a gleam in anyone's eyes to thought of this. So this has been very beneficial to Spring Hill and continues to be. The one we're working on right now is a signal light. I hear it's going to be the first one for Spring Hill. And QT just opened across the street, and if there's one that needs a signal light, I mean, you stand there and you putting your life in your own hand if you try to cross that road or watch the traffic try to navigate that. It'll be done early December. Yesterday, they were in there putting conduits. Again, a vital project, and the two words that I picked up, again, I'll repeat, partnership and catalyst. The catalyst to move this forward came from the partnership. So thank you very much for all the help and support, and Spring Hill appreciates it.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Eiler, Board of County Commissioners, good morning. Tony Hoffman, Public Works Director, City of Overland Park. Thanks for providing me a few minutes to address you today and our full support of the Johnson County Stormwater Management and the county assistance road system cars programs. Simple message from me to you is, for both these programs, these programs are vital to the residents of Johnson County and result in built infrastructure focusing on enhanced life safety, quality of life, and positive economic impact. Your continued support is recommended and vital. We have a great relationship with Kent, Lee, and the entire staff, and we appreciate that relationship. With respect to the stormwater management program, during the past couple of years, this was alluded to at the dais from a few of you, our area has been challenged with severe weather events. My point is this, projects were constructed using stormwater management program funding. These projects fared exceptionally well during these severe events, a true testament to the program and the infrastructure that is now in place to address these sorts of conditions while protecting people and structures. So just a couple of brief examples, nothing that you haven't already heard from others. This is one, of two projects here for the stormwater management program. This is our 2021 major storm sewer repair on Johnson Drive. It's on Johnson Drive from Lowell Avenue to Metcalf Avenue. This is a maintenance project that, as Beth alluded to in Olathe, is removing old deteriorated corrugated metal pipe and replacing it with reinforced concrete pipe. This construction, the construction phase of the project was funded by our own stormwater utility and Johnson County Stormwater Management Program, total about $2 million, as well as stormwater asset management program of 300,000. The second project's a very large project coming to completion. It's our 2021 storm drainage improvement project. It's on 101st Street, Connel to Knox Drive in Overland Park. The 101st and Connel is the first of a four-phase project. It's a flood control project that is deepening and widening an existing concrete ditch liner. The project areas in the floodplain in this phase will remove eight homes from the floodplain. Mr. Ashcraft noted, what are the metrics? You heard that from a few other speakers. Removal of homes in the floodplain is a huge metric that is assisting residents of Johnson County in a big way with respect to payment of insurance for flood insurance. Now they won't have to pay that. Funding for this preliminary engineering study, design, and construction phases of this project were funded by, again, our stormwater utility and the Johnson County Stormwater Management Program. Total budget, 5.3 million, and flood control program, about 3.6 million. The same benefits to Johnson County residents can be said of the cars program. One such project that is completed is our 167th Street Bridges over Coffee Creek. These were new bridges, 167th Street between Quavira and Schweitzer in Overland Park. Project included a construction of two bridges on 167th Street over Coffee Creek and a tributary to Coffee Creek. The project included completion of missing segments of roadway between Quavira and Schweitzer Road and includes a multi-use trail for pedestrians constructed to connect to the Coffee Creek Trail system. Construction phase funded by Overland Park Funds as well as Johnson County Cars Program, total budget 8.995 million, and the cars program of that about 3.913 million dollars. So huge contributions from the cars program. These are just three examples of the positive impact both programs have had over the years. Given the increased cost of construction and inflationary impacts, I would encourage maybe an assessment in the future, near future, of funding for both programs in the near future to order, to maximize those opportunities as construction prices, et cetera, continue to rise, to maximize what we can do for Johnson County residents. In closing, thank you for allowing me the time to convey the importance of both programs and for your continued support for each. One additional item, kind of ad-libbing here, if I may, many of you know now that Kent Laje is transitioning, I call it transition after nearly a quarter century of service, not saying he's old or anything like that. His official farewell is next week. He provided very specific guidance to Bill Stogsdill, myself, and others of no public commentary, but he did not say that it could not have public commentary at the Board of County Commissioners meeting today. So I would ask Mr. Eiler, Chairman Eiler, also Public Works Director Brian Pedig from Johnson County, and the city representatives, if you'd maybe join me for a special quick recognition and a photo. We have something for Kent that he knows nothing about, for his exceptional leadership, collaboration, and partnership. And yes, I know he will not be happy with me for this, but I will just add him to that long, growing list daily. So if we could, maybe come.
All right. Go ahead and make your presentation.
This is on behalf of the Technical Review Committee, by the way. This is on behalf of the Technical Review Committee, by the way.
All right, well, good presentation. Nice, nice going-away gift. Thank you. So, we will go back to commission action. First of all, it will be item number five in regards to the road system program. Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had another question before we take action, and I'm not sure if this is more appropriate for Mr. Hoffman or for Mr. Kellenberger or Mr. Lage. I know that Johnson County Wastewater is doing a big project right now at 103rd and Metcalf. Has there been any opportunity or need even for any kind of stormwater work at that location while they already have so much of the area dug up?
I'm not familiar exactly with that specific project. Tony, are you? At the city's coordination, but we do coordinate quite a bit on it with JCW on different projects to maximize if there's going to be tore up once, whether we need stormwater improvements and so on.
I just didn't know if there was-
Tony, if you want to-
Something going on there, too.
Well, obviously, we're well aware of that. Commissioner Hanslick, there's been no, we had communication with them, but there was no opportunity for other aspects in accordance with that very large project.
Okay.
But we do, we do coordinate with both Johnson County wastewater and Water One to make sure we're not duplicating efforts and to be good governments, stewards of government.
Sure. No, thank you. I appreciate that, and I know you do work together. I just didn't know if there was anything at that particular project site. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion? Ms. Hanslick?
I'm assuming this is for Cars first. Oh, I have, I have it.
Ms. Allenbrand, do you have a motion ready?
Yes, I can make a motion. I just want to make a comment real quickly. I really appreciate the partnerships and the investment back in the communities between the city and the county. I think it's very, very important. We need to support each other, so I really appreciate all the hard work. I move to authorize a 2023 county assistance road system program expenditures in the amount not to exceed $17,248,000.
Commissioner Faust, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Commissioner Faust, second of the motion to approve the county assistance road system program as presented. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Not so much a question, Mr. Chairman, but a point of personal privilege. I wanted to take a moment, if Mr. Lage would please come back to the podium. I know he's hiding behind there. Mr. Chairman, every once in a while, I have the opportunity to bestow the virtues on various county employees as they either enter their service here or leave their service. And when I do that, I usually poll their compatriots, their friends, their colleagues to try to find an antidote that expresses who they are and maybe the, the foibles of their, their perfections or imperfections. And, Mr. Chairman, I attempted to do that with Mr. Lage, and either he has a very loyal set of friends or the man is as humble, kind, thoughtful, and considerate professional administrator that you could ever imagine. And I, I think it was the latter, Mr. Lage. You've always impressed me as such, and I want to thank you for that. But I did have one little observation that was shared. When you came to the county, you were instrumental in the development of the initial floodplain map drawing. The technology was pretty primitive, and you were learning and developing, and you were on the cutting edge, or some would say the bleeding edge, of that technology. But you've shepherded that progress today that has helped us put a scientific approach behind what a floodplain is and how best to manage that. Now, I suspect that that would have been done somewhere by someone else, but you did it, sir, and you did it for us. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion is before. Any further discussion? Is there anyone? Ms. Faust?
Yes, I just wanted, the City of Fairway, that was, you know, I know how much you've dealt with flooding and the homes in the floodplain. There's still more to do. I would, at some point, when all your free time, I would like to have a sheet of the highlights in my district. I would really like to, I go out and speak to every city council every year, and I would just really like to highlight these highlights that were today. So, so I thank you for sharing that.
Okay. All right, so no further questions or discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Eilert?
Eilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Do I hear a motion in regards to the stormwater management? Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize the 2023 stormwater management program expenditures in an amount not to exceed
Commissioner Faust, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Commissioner Faust, second of the motion to approve the stormwater management program as presented. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment on the bridges and bike pedestrian trail on 167th Street. I have biked that twice in the last, I don't know, three or four months, and it is really, really impressive as to the number of people that are using that stretch of, of trails. So, I just wanted to let you know that that money has been very well invested.
Okay, thank you. No further comments. Clerk, please call the roll. Excuse me, Ms. Faust?
A program that I'm really excited about, emailed Lee this week, is native restorations to help with stormwater, and that will be a new program, and the flood control buyout program is new this year. So, thank you for that innovation.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Aye.
And Chairman Eilert?
Aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Thank you all very much for your participation and-
Chair.
-good direction in these programs. Clerk?
Chairman, may we please have a five-minute break?
All right, so noted. We'll take five minutes and come back for the balance of the agenda. At this time, we will reconvene from our five-minute recess. The next item is item number seven.
Consider approving the 2022 stormwater management program policy updates.
Patrick Ellenberger.
Good morning, Commissioners Lee Kellenberger, Johnson County Public Works. To begin, I'd like to direct your attention to the figure called Strategic Plan Implementation Timeline. Many of you have probably seen different versions of this figure over the past six years, have we, as we have worked on implementing the different aspects of our strategic plan. Most recently, you saw it in our study session on July 28th. I promise you, this is probably the last, one of the last times you see it for, in the near future. Each item in this figure really represents a significant change or an entirely new program that we have developed as a result of our strategic plan that the board adopted in 2016, from creating six new watershed organizations to adding funding for system management and flood-prone property buyout, to changing the way we formulate projects and rank, rank them in our new administrative procedures. What this figure doesn't capture is over the 100 meetings and all the volunteer hours that were put forth by members of the Stormwater Management Advisory Council. All of this work and change could not have been accomplished without the support of the numerous subcommittees comprised of city representatives. Which brings us to the item before you today. It's formality, but, you know, the last piece of the puzzle is really updating our program policy to reflect some of these changes. The last time the program's policy was updated was in 2003, and your predecessors were actually very forward-thinking in that the, the policy was written in a way that accommodated the majority of the changes to date. The changes before you today are, I would characterize as relatively minor, and as outlined in the briefing sheet, they include language that reflects the 2016 strategic plan, the requirement of watershed organization membership in order to participate in program funding, changes to our default cost share amount, and the option for the board to consider the use of alternative funding or financing options on a case-by-case basis in the future. As mentioned, these items come, these, this comes to you with the full support and recommendation of the Stormwater Management Advisory Council, and I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions? Ms. O'Hara?
So, is Edgerton going to be part of this?
The last communication we had had with Edgerton is they were going to revisit it with their council. I have not been contacted, though, for, for questions or, or input.
Okay, so they are not part of it at this, at this time?
Currently, no.
Okay, and this is in the area, our area of concern is the Hillsdale Conservation Area.
Okay, so, yeah, their, their city and their incorporated limits are mostly within the Hillsdale Drainage Area, yes. Watershed Organization Four.
Okay, and, but they have chosen not to participate at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand?
I have a motion ready when you're-
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, the motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The stormwater management program, SMP, policy has been updated to incorporate changes necessary for the implementation of the 2016 strategy plan. The program policy updates have been reviewed and recommended to the Board of County Commissioners-
Excuse me, I think, I think you're reading the background rather than the motion. I'm sorry.
You know, I am, and thank you so much. I move to approve the 2022 stormwater management program policy updates.
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion, finally, and Hanslick, second of the motion, to approve the policy update for stormwater management as presented. Is there any further questions or discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye, and glad to provide entertainment as well.
And Chairman Eilert?
Aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight, consider authorizing an exception to competition with Hy-Vee and IHOP for nutritious meals for eligible persons for the Champs, C-H-A-M-P-S-S, choosing healthy appetizing meal plan solutions for seniors. Program in the Aging and Human Services Department for an annual amount not to exceed $600,000 for a period of 12 months, with the option to renew for four additional 12-month periods. for a period of 12 months, with the option to renew for four additional 12-month periods.
Ms. Layal.
Good morning, Commissioners Megan Leahy with Aging and Human Services. This is an item where we're asking for your approval to issue new contracts for our CHAMPSS program with both Hy-Vee and IHOP. For some background, the CHAMPSS program began here in Johnson County in 2008. It was created by some current and former staff members, and it's been replicated throughout the state and really throughout the nation. It is an alternative to the traditional congregate meal sites, where we would provide meals in community centers, senior centers, and places like this, where CHAMPSS is done in a community setting to provide more flexibility and choice. It's funded primarily with federal funds through the Older Americans Act, and we currently have over 2,400 clients enrolled in the program. So for the first 14 years, Hy-Vee was our only vendor in this program, and we started with just one or two Hy-Vee's, and over the years have expanded, and we're now in all eight Hy-Vee's in Johnson County. As we were looking for ways to offer more variety in the program, we were really excited that in July of this year, we opened three IHOP sites here in Johnson County. So it's only been two months, but so far, it's been really successful in terms of usage and feedback from our clients, and we've also had a significant increase in the last few months for new clients enrolling in the program. So we're wanting to continue partnerships with both of those entities, so we're asking to award contracts to both. Contracts would begin October 1st. These follow the federal fiscal year for a one-year period with an option to renew those up to four times. And going this process will allow us, again, to work with both vendors. We have a longstanding partnership with Hy-Vee. The partnership with IHOP is growing, and then it would also allow us future expansions for other partners in the future. So we're not asking for any additional monies. It would be utilizing the federal funds, and this has been reviewed by budget purchasing legal staff, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the Commission on Aging meeting and actually heard from some residents that use this, citizens, and so it's a very important program. I know there was a couple of comments that it would be nice if the copy was included, but they really, it's used by a lot of people, and they really do appreciate this, so it's money well spent. Thank you.
Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you. I have similar experience to Commissioner Allenbrand. In fact, about a week ago, I was speaking with a senior citizen in Overland Park, and she could not say enough good things about the CHAMPSS program. She loves that it's been extended to IHOP because it gives more choices. Sometimes she goes to Hy-Vee, sometimes IHOP, and she is so grateful because it allows her to stretch her budget. And she also was very grateful for the food deliveries that you did using the COVID funding. She said that was incredibly helpful to have those basics, and the items you chose were perfect. I also wanted to thank the Aging and Human Services staff, and I think I mentioned this before, for joining me to speak to the resident association at the Santa Fe Towers in downtown Overland Park. We had the opportunity to learn, a lot of them were not familiar with this program nor the congregate meal sites or the opportunity for the home-delivered meals, and so we're going to keep working with them, and I really appreciate that service and that opportunity for your staff to come and help speak to those folks, and I look forward to doing that with other communities, too, because getting the word out is so important. There's nothing more distressing than finding out that someone is not getting proper nutrition because they don't know the resources that are available. So thank you for this, and I completely support it.
Ms. Fast.
Yes, wasn't Johnson County CHAMPSS program one of the first in the state that you, this department piloted that, this program?
Yes, not only the first in the state, but the first that we're aware of at all, and so...
In the nation, you're saying?
Yes, so that's been replicated in many other places.
I have, one of my best friends, her mom has early-stage dementia, and so they've been able now, because of the CHAMPSS program is now in Douglas County, not to use her stove and her microwave, and has a neighbor take her there and bring some of the food home. I mean, so it really helps her continue to live safely in her home. I'm not quite sure how it will be with, okay, with the IHOP. Do they just order off the menu, or how does that work?
So when you go into one of our locations, there's a separate menu for our program because they have to be approved by dietitians and meet the nutritional standards. So you'd be provided a menu of choices for the CHAMPSS program, and it is sometimes more variety than people may think. There may be, you know, turkey sandwiches, salads, fish, pork, and so there'll be proteins, vegetables, fruit, dairy, grains, all in that meal.
And how do they get the, is it a CHAMPSS card? They have to come to your office, or can they call and you send it? How does one get it?
Yeah, so if you want to get more information or enroll in the program, the best thing to do is to call our CHAMPSS line. So that number is 715-8894, and then we will work on getting you the information to get you enrolled. You can also find more information on our website about the program.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is being funded by Older Americans Act. How stable of a funding source is, excuse me, how stable of a funding source is this?
It's been a very stable, long-time funding source for all of our nutrition programs, so CHAMPSS, the congregate sites, and also home-delivered meals.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Leahy, a couple of clarifying questions. $600,000 for about, currently 2,400 clients. So how many meals will that provide to these clients? Do you have any estimate on that?
So our current estimates are that meals are running about $6.50 per meal, so...
How many clients is that, or how many meals are provided?
$600,000.
I have a calculator.
You want 100,000?
Yeah.
So you're saying 100,000?
Commissioner, Commissioner Ashcraft, I did a quick math. It is approximately $250 per person, and that is approximately 41.6 meals.
And I will say that that $600,000 figure is a high estimate that assumes a lot of growth in the program. So if you're looking at a per-meal amount, it's closer to $6.50 for the direct meal cost that we're billed for.
Okay.
And that was based on $6.
Yeah, and Commissioner O'Hara, thank you. Before I was jumped by my colleagues, I was trying to understand how many meals each person received, and if it's only 41, so that's really just, on average, about three a month?
So on average, with the 2,400 clients, the average is only about 10 to 12 meals per year per client, so it's on the low side. We looked at, on a monthly basis, on a monthly basis, we're close to about 1,000 clients each month that get meals through the program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? If not, it's back before the commission. The motion is in order. Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, I'm glad to make the motion, but I also wanted to just ask another question. Do we provide information to hospitals, like the hospital social workers, so that people know about these programs, if they're being discharged? I know, the reason I ask is I was talking to someone the other day whose father was discharged from the hospital, and she was beside herself because she didn't know how he was going to feed himself, and when I told her about the home-delivered meals, she didn't, she said nobody at the hospital had mentioned that, so I didn't know if that was something we might want to look into, make sure the hospitals are aware of that in their discharge planning to make sure people know about that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can look into that.
Well, thank you. And yes, I'm glad to make the motion. I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize an exception to competition with Hy-Vee and IHOP for nutritious meals for eligible persons for the CHAMPSS, choosing healthy appetizing meal plan solutions for seniors program in the Aging and Human Services Department for an annual amount not to exceed $600,000 for a period of 12 months, with the option to renew for four additional 12-month periods.
Allenbrand, second.
Hanslick made the motion. Allenbrand seconded the motion to authorize the exception to contract for competition in regards to the CHAMPSS program with Hy-Vee and IHOP. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I am supportive of this program, but Ms. Leahy, I would ask sometime in the near future, I'd like to learn more about the services we provide to help keep our aging population at home rather than the more costly option related to Medicaid costs, and I know this is just one program, and you may not have responsibility for all of them, but I'd like to understand how that package works, that, for lack of a better term, safety net works that helps keep people in their homes rather than in long-term care facilities.
And thank you. Other comments? Ms. Hanslick.
Just, Ms. Leahy, can you confirm the CHAMPSS program? There is no income guideline for that, is there?
That's correct. So the requirement to participate in the program, you have to be age 60 or older and live in Johnson County. We do accept and ask for donations for the program for those who are able to pay, but we're never going to deny a meal for anyone who can't, and the donations do cover over half the cost of the meals that are provided.
So Commissioner Ashcraft, you could go try out the CHAMPSS program. You said you want to learn more about it.
Other comments? Ms. O'Hara.
As far as our goal for helping people to age in place, I want my colleagues to remember that the ever-increasing property tax burden is very problematic in that some people are just not able to afford to stay in their homes because of the property taxes. I just think that we need to be cognizant of that.
Well, the motion is on the CHAMPSS food program, so if there's no other comments on the motion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Iler, aye. Motion carried. Seven votes in favor. Next item.
Item number nine, consider approving an early termination agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas, and Evergreen Living Innovations Incorporated with a payment of $29 million of general fund reserves, countywide support funds.
Ms. Thompson.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners Maury Thompson, Deputy County Manager. Let me start by first saying thank you to our friends from Evergreen Living Innovations for sticking with us this morning at a long meeting. This is an item that the Board has talked about for a number of years now. A little bit of history, we have a current agreement with Evergreen Living that provides county subsidy and use of a county building for the provision of their services. That current contract is slated to expire December 31st of 2027, so essentially, we have about five years left on the current agreement. However, we also know that the building that they use is in significant need of repair or perhaps even likely demolition and rebuild. So we've known collectively that we've had an issue to address and to solve for some time regarding our ongoing obligation to Evergreen Living through the current contract and the need for them to find a new facility or to construct a new facility to continue to meet their mission. We have worked diligently with the Board and staff of Evergreen over the last few years, trying to solve this dilemma. As you may recall, the Board at one point authorized a fair amount of funding to have a study done. As we completed that, we found that the solutions proposed there were not workable, so we went back and began again. We're here today with a solution, a proposal that we believe meets the dual objectives of both county government and Evergreen. So as you can see before you, the motion is to approve an early termination agreement and commit a payment of $29 million in countywide support funds, general fund reserves, to do two things. One, to pay for the existing obligation the county has under the contract, which is $5 million, plus an additional $25 million to allow them to construct a new facility to continue to serve those in need of nursing care in Johnson County with less than sufficient means and to meet their mission. So again, two objectives here. I will speak a bit to the need that Evergreen has for a new building. As those of you who have toured the building know, it was constructed many years ago and constructed with semi-private rooms. As I think most of us are aware, that market has changed significantly now, and the demand is not there for a semi-private room, it's there for a private room. So they do have a need to construct a new facility, again, to position them to continue to meet the needs of their community. The second objective that the county had, and I'll be quite blunt about this, was to position them to meet their mission going forward in a self-sufficient manner, ending ongoing subsidy of county government to meet this need. With this agreement, we accomplish that. The agreement before you today, the early termination agreement, I believe contains very clear language, ensuring understanding of both parties, the county and Evergreen, that once this termination and payment, if approved by the Board, further subsidy and any potential future liability from the county to Evergreen would cease. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I would make one additional note this morning. I know that there's been conversation this morning about the need to add, I will say, an additional clause to that early termination agreement. That would likely coincide with a construction schedule for Evergreen, so that that payment of the $29 million would be issued over a timeframe consistent with our construction schedule. I've had the opportunity to visit with staff and council and their contractor, who all believe that that is achievable. So, Mr. Chairman, finally, I would ask that the Board consider continuing this item for one week to allow me to work with staff and council to add that clause and that schedule to the termination agreement. With that, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure that it can be completed within one week, so I would leave that open until the agreement is presented, and then we could add it to the agenda. So I don't want to put a particular timeline if we can't get it accomplished.
Very good.
Yes. I know that the Director is with us today. Chris, would you like to make any comments?
I'll just make a brief statement. Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I am Chris Osborne. I'm the CEO of Evergreen Community of Johnson County, and I'd just like to thank the Commissioners for your support of Evergreen over the years. That support's led to a very successful 20-year partnership that has allowed Evergreen Community to provide award-winning care and services to older adults with limited assets in our community. Your support allows Evergreen Community to continue our mission and serve people with the dignity and respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, just a little bit of history, I think back in 2007, when this original agreement was drafted and approved, the concept was that the county would subsidize the operation by the tune of $1 million over 20 years, and this would allow the Board to raise funds and be able to redevelop on their own. Obviously, a couple of years later, after that was passed, a severe recession occurred, and due to no fault of the Board's effort, that funding has not been able to be erased in the private sector. So I think this is a good approach. We do need to identify some other items in the agreement, and so... Ms. O'Hara.
Yes, okay, so this building was built in the mid-'90s, is that correct?
Early to mid-'90s. I'm looking to Joe for the exact year, if you recall.
What year was? '94? Yeah. Yeah, 1996. Okay, this, coming from the construction industry, and I went over and I looked at this building, I was shocked at the lack of maintenance that has been provided to this building for several years. The roof has never been replaced, as I understand. There's been some patches, and the windows leak. There's been mudjacking that could have been done, but that has not been done. I was shocked, and it is just shocking that we have this facility, and we did not maintain it, and now it will be torn down, and I have, it is just... And I have, it is just, it's hard to sit here and acknowledge that that has happened. The other question I have is that in the county manager's message to us on the budget, and this was in May of 2022, nursing center, $15 million, was that for Evergreen or was... So in May, we thought that the buyout was going to be 15 million, and now it's 29 million.
I believe that figure did not include the current contractual obligation of the $5 million.
Right.
Okay, explain that again.
So the current agreement that the Board of County Commissioners has with Evergreen calls for this subsidy on an annual basis, there's still five years under that current agreement.
So that would take it down to 24 million, our actual net cost.
So the buyout, if you will, of the current contract is $5 million. Five years remaining on it.
Yes, I understand that, but then our overall cost is 29 million minus the 5 million, so the actual cost is going to be 24 million, which in May was forecast to be 15 million.
Yes, there has been an increase, as we all know, in building costs.
Right. But I just, you know, we, this is May of 2022, and the estimate was 15 million, and so now the actual cost is going to be 24 million. The other question is, this 29 million that is coming from the community support services, I believe that that is the money that has come through ARPA.
Correct.
And that was funneled through the Sheriff's Department and then came down to the general fund.
This was the lost revenue that we were able to claim.
Right, right, the lost revenue that came through the Sheriff's Department and then went down to the general reserves, which we tucked away into the county support services, which I think we had like 60 million in there. Is that correct, approximately? Then there's 31 million and another.
Correct.
Okay, and this was under miscellaneous expenditures. The 60 million was a line item in the budget of miscellaneous that had not been designated.
Robin is saying yes.
Is that correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Ms. Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm in full support of this, but I do have a couple of questions. It helps us meet our contract and obligations. I feel like Evergreen has the right professional staff onboard. Just a couple of questions, who is, once this money, once this is approved, who is the responsible person? Who's the guarantor? I know the county's not, but I was just wondering, is that the Board set up? Because that would make me feel a little bit more comfortable, you know, who is the... Everybody has to do a guarantee, so I didn't know who that was.
I'm going to defer that to someone from Evergreen, if someone would like to address that. Looks like council is...
Who's responsible for the money?
Approaching the podium.
Mr. Templin.
Good morning, Roger Templin. Counsel to the Evergreen Board of Directors with Payne &amp; Jones. As far as who is going to be the guarantor, I don't know that I quite understand the concept of a guarantor. I will tell you, the Board will have the responsibility for the stewardship of this money. These funds will be segregated for the purposes of trying to relocate after losing our facility. And quite frankly, this is the best opportunity we've had after years of negotiation of trying to find some other way we can try to provide this service in the county, which will be undoubtedly different than what we've done in the past. But I think this Board has been very diligent in trying to find a way to make it work. The agreement you have before you helps us move forward with that. And if the delay continues with this, we have more problems than we have now, because time is already running short. So I would appreciate the opportunity to see this vetted by you and approved with all due haste, to get this moving, so that they can get their plans together and they can start moving forward. I know we've identified property and you have contractors that we have been working with and consultants to try to put this together in a way to make it work.
You do already have plans in place and you're ready to move forward?
Yeah, I don't believe we're anywhere near ground-ready plans to breaking ground. We don't even have the ground under contract yet.
Okay, okay.
And the funds are really what we need to get going with them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like Commissioner Allen Brand, I'm very supportive of this item. I don't know that a lot of people realize that years and years ago, the county was obligated to take care of people who were elderly or, quote, in poverty. In fact, my understanding is the land where the Sunset Building is and the public health and Evergreen now sit used to be the land where the county poor farm was located. So the county has historically had a responsibility in that regard. In addition, Evergreen is an excellent and outstanding program. I often tell people, if you're trying to compare and look at nursing homes, just go to Medicare.gov and you can pull up all of the ratings, and Evergreen is always in the top of all of the programs in Johnson County. Secondly, or maybe thirdly, we have a growing older population, and we're going to need more beds. We can't, we cannot, it would not be prudent to take beds out of service, especially Medicaid beds. If we want people as they are aging to be able to stay in Johnson County, I mean, first we'd like to help them stay in their homes as long as they can, but if they can't stay in their home, at least they could stay within the county. And Evergreen provides a really wonderful place. If you haven't been there to visit it, it is very special. It is a happy, clean, wonderful place, and I wish them all the best in moving forward and continuing to be that kind of a place. And I think this, given the history of Evergreen, and I think this is a fair and equitable solution.
Okay. Other questions, Ms. Fast?
Yeah, I'm, well, so, Evergreen doesn't have a plan yet, right? And so you're waiting for us for this contract, and then what you're saying, Maury, is that we want to have, we depend it upon their plan and construction, then we'll provide the full, it's just, to me, it's like the horse without the cart, you know what I mean? Evergreen can't move, and we're now delaying, I'm just not quite following all this.
Yes, so I believe as Chris just shared, they are needed, these funds, to be able to start the process of moving forward. But when I say start the process, my understanding, not to speak for them, is that they have engaged a contractor and have maybe called preliminary plans ready to do. In order to start to execute those and to actually purchase the ground that they've located, they need these funds to do so. What I proposed this morning in an additional amendment to the proposed agreement is, instead of making one large payment, we would divide that up and make those payments as construction progressed. We need to ensure that we probably do that first payment upfront. Again, they have a cash flow issue that we need to address. They need to have funds to get this started. Then what we're proposing, as construction proceeds, we would make another payment.
Okay.
What do you see as the timeframe for, you know, moving out of the building? I think, you know, it's 2027, but I mean, that's a long time.
And so it's all dependent on finding land, getting the appropriate permits in place, so that can delay construction. We've been told anywhere from two and a half to three years to be able to, if we move today, to be able to get out.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
So, Maury, this will be like a construction draw. They will have costs, they will submit those to us, and then we will cut a check for that cost. My concern is that they're going to get in the middle of this project and they're going to run out of money. So what happens then? We have a facility that is halfway done, and there's no, there's no, there's no private funding for it, and then they're going to be coming back and asking for more money from the county? I mean, this is really concerning to me that there's not really a solid plan, and I understand, coming from the construction industry, I understand that, and I also understand the escalation of cost. But how are we going to protect the taxpayers? I mean, $29 million went in May, it was supposed to be $15 million, and I understand, $5 million. So we're not going to be giving Evergreen the $5 million subsidy per year.
Correct.
And so it's an effective cost of 24 million, but that is a huge increase from the 15. And this is setting a precedent that if the costs escalate, then you come back to the county. And what will we do if it's halfway done, three quarters away done, and there's no private financing? I mean, do we need to have perhaps private financing in place for this? Or Evergreen have private financing in place for contingencies so that we don't have a partially completed facility with no way to finish it?
So a number of things to respond to there. Your first characterization as a construction draw, I think that's fair, with one caveat, we will need to upfront them some money in order to get this started, then it becomes a construction draw, if you will.
And how much? Are you talking $5 million to jumpstart this?
That's what we need to determine, that's why I'm asking for at least one week to continue to figure out what that amount would be.
I would like a listing of like architectural cost, land acquisition, whatever, I mean, I don't know, they may just put a hold on a piece of ground. I don't know what their plans are, but I think that we need to have more due diligence so that we understand. You always want to know how this is going to end before you begin.
Well, I think, my impression is they've been working with a contractor to develop those costs, so those costs are available. You know, there's another side to this question, which let's not overlook. Our commitment now, if they stay at the current facility, is a million dollars a year for another five years, based upon the market. And I've shared this, and I think everybody's well aware, the business plan that they operate on now cannot continue. So if there's not an additional step that's taken to support this activity to build a new facility, are we going to continue a million-dollar subsidy for the next 20 years? And what kind of expenses are going to be incurred to upgrade the facility that they are currently in? And so that's the other side. You know, it seems to me that there are steps that can be taken to make sure that, in other words, you purchased land, you have an asset, and bankers are interested in assets. So I think there's a way to move forward, and thank you, Mr. Thompson, for recognizing the issue, and in a week or two, we'll have clarification of that. Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you. Following up with that, and I think Commissioner O'Hara brings up some good questions, but my question is, why do we not just give the money to them in one lump sum and then we're done? Then it's up to them, and if costs escalate, we're not responsible? Maybe you could help me understand that process.
We're not responsible anyway.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Once this money's allocated, that's it.
And if they can't leave, then...
Well, so the backstop to all of this, back to Commissioner O'Hara's question, is you have a binding agreement that says, end of 2027, this agreement is done, we have no ongoing obligation, it is a contract. So then to your question, Commissioner Hanslick, that's how I originally created that, with that thought in mind. If the goal of the county was to end this relationship and this subsidy, we would do it with this termination agreement, there would be that one payment made, and then it was on the Board of Evergreen to go forth and figure that out. I understand the desire to ensure that they have a building, and that's what we're now proposing to do. Whether that, quite frankly, extends your ongoing obligation in some people's mind as a risk for those construction upgrades, I think that's a potential risk.
Okay. Ms. Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions. First of all, we have an obligation, and we need to honor that obligation. And then I would like to ask Legal, because they do have a Board, that's why I asked, who's the guarantor, so they are responsible, and they're going to take responsibility for this. So I don't feel like we need to be in the middle of their, I mean, they're already working on that, so to me, that is not our responsibility. And I just want to ask Legal, does this hold us responsible if we... I think there were some Commissioners that we, you know, instead of doing a lump sum, was separate, you know...
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I will look into that when we take a look at the agreement with the new arrangement, and we will address your concerns during that, if we end up in this arrangement that we're not the guarantor. But we need to have these dialogues offline.
So, and we couldn't do a motion now, we would need to wait until those discussions...
The motion to continue the item pending changes to the agreement. Mr. Ashcraft?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Osborne, I'll direct this to you, although Mr. Thompson may know. Approximately how many residents are we, are you caring for currently? And under the new model, the new business plan, will it be the same number, or will you be hoping to expand that population, or give me some sense of that?
So, we have 112 beds. Before the pandemic, we ran at about 105 residents. Currently, one of our neighborhoods is shut down due to staffing shortages. We are at 71 residents currently and 16 hospice patients in total. And then you asked about moving forward on a new campus.
Yes, sir.
What that would look like. So it would be similar in size, somewhere 120-ish residents that would be, we'd be taking care of.
Okay, well, I very much respect the work that you've done, you and your staff have done historically. The challenge is the money, but the challenge is also, I'll say, the 100 people, and it may be less, maybe more, but the 100 people. Because I would hope that Evergreen Living, or whatever your next generation is called, will be an ongoing concern, but if for some reason, whether it's a construction kerfuffle or changes in the Board or whatever, if that new business plan, that new model does not come to fruition, then we still have that population of 100 people to be concerned about. And while technically we may have an agreement with the Board to carry forward on that and absolve ourselves, the reality is, if the Board can't, and I'm not saying intentionally or unintentionally, but whatever the challenges are, it still, it seems like would fall back to the county unless there's some other option. And I was just wondering, do you have a perspective on that?
On the success of this project?
Well, if there has to be a third option, if that campus can't function as desired and the county doesn't accept responsibility, what would happen to those individuals?
So, I've been at Evergreen for going on 17 years. We've run a very successful program over that time with multiple obstacles and hurdles to get through, both the local, state, and federal level. I have all confidence that we will be able to execute this project and be successful in the future, long-term. If we did run into some circumstances, there is always the possibility of partnering with another long-term care provider, either locally or within the state of Kansas. I do have many colleagues across the state that I keep in touch with, other single-site providers that we work together. It's a tough field, but we're able to make it work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Hara?
Your clientele is all of Medicaid, is that correct?
No, the majority of it is Medicaid, but we also provide private care and...
Okay, but the majority is Medicaid. I mean, your model is based on providing the services for people that are dependent upon Medicaid, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to... All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item?
If I may, can I follow up with that?
Yes, go right ahead.
So pursuant to the contract that we negotiated 20 years ago, and quite frankly, before that, the genesis of this was the Friends of Johnson County Nursing, which was the Johnson County Nursing Facility. The county, in its wisdom at that time, said, we want to privatize this. We want to get out of the nursing home business. So they created a new entity, and that entity is what you see today, Evergreen. It has always operated at essentially a loss because of our contract with the county, which required us to do 65%, I believe, is a minimum of Medicaid, two-thirds. And we have always historically tried to do more than that, which we could only do because of the county subsidy. We would love it if the county built us a new building, and we continued on with this model. But that's not on the table. And we've been through those negotiations, and we've talked through all of this. And this is a settlement agreement as a result of those discussions. So while I'm certainly sensitive to the idea of, well, if we're going to give this money, you got to build a new building and all that, that's great. But we would really rather have had you build the building, and had the county do that, and us continue to serve the population we have. With these changes, there will have to be a change to the patient mix in order to make it work. And so while this entity will do what it can to continue to serve that mission, it's going to be difficult to do that. It's 62-thirds Medicaid cannot really be done. So that's part of this new area. This new building is a way to make it more self-sustaining.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
So you're looking at maybe 30% will be Medicaid? What is your model that you're going forward, so that you can make this work financially? Because this is what you're going to... If you have to find private funding, you're going to have to have this in place to take to the bank and say, okay, we have $29 million from the county. This is our business plan. We're no longer going to need the million-dollar-a-year subsidy. So what is the model?
Yeah. That model is to serve as many Medicaid as possible, minimal 30%. Would hope that that would be higher. Medicaid, it's a shortfall, about $50 a day, getting close to $12,000 a year per individual on Medicaid to make that up. We've also looked at starting an endowment fund that would help to offset that cost, to allow us to increase the number of Medicaid individuals that we're able to care for.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand?
Mr. Chair, I want to make one comment, a couple comments, and then I have a motion when you're ready.
Go right ahead.
I just, just to go back to Mr. Osborne's comment, you know, if he decides at some time, the Board decides, there are other organizations to partner with, and I know he's talked with them. So I feel confident that, you know, they're going to put a plan into place. And, you know, it's different now compared to when this home first started. So this is going to also give them the opportunity to do a different case mix and be more suitable to what's going on in the industry now. So I have a motion, Mr. Chair, when you're ready.
Right ahead.
I move to continue this item to the next BOCC Business Meeting.
I would suggest to leave that specific date open.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the legal...
Well, can complete this in one week, as Mr. Murray has indicated, and that we can have that provided.
Well, okay. Next week is a long, long meeting, longer than today. So it's up to the staff.
Well, we've got Batman on it, so we're good.
We got to get it done.
I'm suggesting some flexibility, but...
I would agree.
You know, that's my judgment.
Okay, if that's the desire of this commission, I was just wondering, Mr. Thompson, I thought you said one week.
I believe we could get that done. One other option is to suggest you continue it for one week. If we can't get it done, you continue it for another week. But I'm confident we can do it in a week.
All right, let me finish.
All right.
I move to continue this item to the next BOCC Business Meeting of 9:29.
Commissioner Faust, second.
Motion is made by Allenbrand, and seconded by Faust, to continue this item to our next meeting. Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Faust?
So that 65% that you always, you're determined to provide, and I've said this to Maury before, you know, I've worked in hospice and the front lines, there's very few providers of nursing home Medicaid, you know, you provide this huge need. So that 65 was a part of our 20-year contract? Did we ever come to change that, to make it less, so you'd be, you know, more profitable, or more, you know what I mean? Because the Medicaid's rate changes at times.
Yeah, the Medicaid rate changes every six months. So, yeah, that just throws another wrench in working with. And again, that's something this organization and many other organizations across the country work with annually. We've been able to do that successfully. That's just how the nursing home world works in this country.
But so that 65% was grade upon 20 years ago?
Yes. And we've really been serving 80 to 85% on the subsidy.
Okay, so that could have been changed.
But we've been over that.
Oh, you've been over... Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Well, I think it's, you know, I'm not sure that we can make an accurate prediction as to what the product mix should be at this point in time. And so I'm not sure that should be part of any...
I'm not suggesting that. I was just asking about the past.
Ms. O'Hara, you have another question?
Yes. So this is just to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So just assuming that you have a population of 100 clients, that at this point, the goal is 65 of those would be under Medicaid. And your model going forward, that the services would be provided only to 30 clients, potentially? So this $29 million, instead of servicing or creating services for 65 individuals, now we're down to 30 individuals that would be on Medicaid. Is that correct?
That's potential.
Okay.
We also, looking at the endowment, could serve more. And then there's also HCBS funds available. We have not, in the past, operated within HCBS. This would give us the opportunity to...
And HCBS?
Home and Community Based Services.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Thank you all very much. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes our action agenda. We are at 12:28. We have agenda review. We have a motion. We need an executive session. We'll turn to reports and communications. If there's some that can wait, let's do so. Ms. Postocfoferguson?
Thank you, Chairman. First item we have is regarding NOCO Jotify... I said that wrong. Notified JOCO, success story. You, most of you know what notified JOCO is, but it's a mass notification system designed to keep Johnson County residents, businesses, people who work or visit in the county, and others informed of emergencies in Johnson County. And one example that of a success recently is at the end of August, when a 2:00 AM call into the sheriff's office, they received word of a missing juvenile. The sheriff's office sent a notified JOCO alert to 6,513 contacts in the area in which the juvenile went missing. By 2:26 AM, a resident who had seen the juvenile when they were walking their dog called the dispatch due to the notification. So based on the information provided by the resident, dispatch coordinated with law enforcement, and they were able to reunite the juvenile with her family. This is just one of the many examples of the importance of signing up for notified JOCO and its communication tool in our community. Dan Robison, who's the Deputy Director of Emergency Management, is in our audience this morning, if there's questions on that. And if not, Chairman, I can move to the next item.
Questions? Okay, continue, please.
The next item is Black and Veach Makerspace Partnership with Med Act. The Black and Veach Makerspace at Johnson County Library recently launched an important new partnership with Johnson County Med Act. The Makerspace is producing 3D-printed anatomical models for training emergency medical providers in life-saving techniques. Additional information on this partnership is attached in your memo. And Adelle Garcia, Division Chief, who oversees a project, is here, I believe, if there's questions.
Questions? Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the CIRI report. The full report's attached, September edition. Most of the items are regarding July. So in July 2022, the unemployment rate was 2.9% compared to 3.8% the previous year. Year-to-date, single-family home sales through July were 6,125 compared to 6,720 last year. This is a 9% decrease. Single-family building permits year-to-date through July issued were 1,665 compared to 1,425 of the previous year, and this is a 25% decrease. Total retail sales for Johnson County year-to-date through June 2022 were $9.2 billion compared to $8.2 billion through the same time period last year, and this is an 11% increase. The last item, Chairman, I'd like to say a thank you to the Kansas City Chamber of Commerce. I was part of a leadership exchange, along with 180 leaders in the metro area to go to Detroit. And there were a few things that I will just highlight that were mentioned. And someone talked about electric vehicles earlier. I think it was Commissioner Ashcraft that asked her question. But at Wayne State University, we attended a session, and it was entitled, "The Business of Mobility, Auto Industry, Innovation, and the Future." So we heard a lot of things like, for example, a drone-like car that can fly. And imagine taking your commute from two hours down to 10 minutes, for example. We did see a prototype of that at the auto show. They talked about policies related to parking lots. Think about, you're in your car about 5% of your life, yet we have these surfaces and garages that could be used repurposed for multi-use, green space, et cetera. We heard from the Governor's Office of Michigan, and they spoke about a partnership between Alphabet, which is a parent company of Google, partnership with Ford, GM, BMW, Honda, Toyota, and other others in the state of Michigan, to design the world's first connected and autonomous corridor. It's 40 miles connecting Detroit to Ann Arbor. So you may have heard of smart pavements, but imagine getting in your car, and everything's connected, your car's connected to the world. Whether it's your wearable, and you get in your car, and it's just programmed to whatever your calendar is for the day, for example, or charging stations that are in the pavement. So you don't have to stop for hours and recharge your electric car, but it's actually in the pavement. So it's pretty amazing. They'll be testing whether, what's the viability of actually completely driverless cars on this corridor is what their vision is. And we heard about the grand bargain in 2013 after bankruptcy, after the city of Detroit's bankruptcy, and the public-private philanthropy partnerships. We heard about affordable housing challenges and successes. We heard about professional sports impact. They have four professional sports within a few miles, football, baseball, soccer, hockey, and the impact on the economy. They have a river walk that across the river is Canada. So we heard about that, and workforce challenges. The last thing I'd point out, if you're ever in the Detroit area, I encourage you to go to the Ford World Headquarters. Talk about robotics, logistics. 40% of their trucks go directly on rail. And they had the largest, at one point, the largest green roof in the world at Ford. It's now dropped to number 12 or 13, as others have expanded it. So it was a good opportunity to travel with city and county leaders, business leaders, philanthropy leaders in the metro, learn about another metro area, but also build relationships in the region. So with that, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. O'Hara?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, just an observation on the CIRI numbers, that the real estate industry is seeing a significant decrease. And that's because, obviously, all of us knows the increase of interest rates, and that the Fed just raised the base rate by another 75 basis points yesterday. And just a quick question. I saw somewhere in the packet of information about the annexation of the rest of Sunflower. Is that in next week's information? Or where did I read that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I sent you out an email just to make you aware that that would be coming. But the annexation, they're anticipating that till November.
Till November?
Yeah.
Okay. I have communicated just really quickly with Gardener, and they are not in favor of that. And so I have quite a few questions on that.
Well, that was privileged information.
Okay, thank you.
That's a just-so-do judgment to make. So we have a couple, I have one item. The Kansas City Association of Counties Annual Conference is in Overland Park, Johnson County, mid-September. We need one voting delegate and two alternates. So we need to make that determination. I'll be glad to serve as the delegate. If there's someone else who wants to serve as an alternate, Ms. Allenbrand?
I can serve as an alternate.
All right.
When is this?
Alternate, who's the other alternate?
When is, when's the date?
Pardon? I think it's mid-October, about October 19th.
October 15 through 17.
All right. Ms. Allenbrand and I, was there another one?
I'll volunteer.
Pardon?
I'll volunteer.
All right.
You're going to go to it?
Go to it.
Yeah, if, yes, I will go to it. Is it, are they all day?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I have other commitments if they're all day. Okay.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Shirley.
So do we have a staff member who wants to volunteer?
I can.
Postocfoferguson, so, okay. Ilert will be the voting delegate. Allenbrand, alternate one. Postocfoferguson, alternate two. Do I hear such a motion?
I move to approve Ed Ilert as the voting delegate, and Shirley Allenbrand as the first alternate delegate, and Penny Postal Ferguson as the second alternate delegate for the 2022 Kansas Association of Counties Conference Event Annual Business Meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Hanslick.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the voting delegate and alternates. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. We'll turn to Commission comments. We have an executive session. We have a short agenda review, and some may be interested in lunch. So following those Commission comments, we will determine how we proceed from that point, starting with Ms. O'Hara.
I have no comments.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Johnson County Parks and Recreation District was recognized at the Golden Medalists, Golden Medal finalists awards reception by the American Academy for Parks and Recreation Administration, and the National Park and Recreation Association. And as we're very proud across the nation, there were four finalists. I can't report that we were picked as number one, but I want to congratulate, again, our staff and everybody involved at Johnson County Park and Recreation for the outstanding job that they continue to do. And in my books, they are number one. But a county, Parks and Recreation District from Baton Rouge, Iowa, was the number-one picked finalist out of the four.
Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention that being a social worker, one of my greatest pleasures of being a county commissioner is providing constituent services. And unfortunately, with the pandemic, that put a little bit of a damper on that. But now that we're back being able to talk in person, I really appreciate the opportunities to help constituents with things from connecting them with aging services, to helping neighborhoods with some problem properties they have. And I particularly wanted to mention, I think, especially in response to Commissioner O'Hara's question about seniors and property taxes, is right now, there are actually four state programs that seniors can apply to for help with property taxes. The first one is the Kansas Housing Assistant Fund. And in fact, I'm working with somebody right now to help her apply for that for property. It helps provide funding for property taxes that are in arrears, as well as mortgage payments. Secondly, the state also has the Homestead Fund Act, and what's called the SAFE SIR. It's particularly for seniors. And then a new one just adopted by the legislature this year is a base tax freeze. And if people want more information about that, I am happy to provide that and point you to the right resources. But I do want seniors to know that those resources exist. And I'm doing everything I can in my district to make sure that folks are aware of those programs. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
And Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Beau, our county appraiser. He went out with me to a Farm Bureau meeting, Board meeting, and has been working with them on issues they may have with ag, and just explaining the process, and I really appreciate him doing that. And then I already made a comment how much I enjoyed the library fundraiser, and just, you know, getting that word out there. And also, this Saturday night, if you want to help Evergreen, they're having their fundraiser and event Saturday night, and you can get tickets now.
Thank you, Ms. Faust.
Yeah, last Saturday, all the Northeast cities joined together for the Environmental Fair at the Sylvester Powell. It was just really exciting to see parked, I mean, a packed parking lot, and so many people in, at the Sylvester Powell, learning about environmental initiatives, and how they can compost, recycle, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. One item I have, next Wednesday, the 28th, there will be, there will be viewing the artifacts that were in the time capsule that was discovered as they were tearing down the old courthouse. That'll be at the Arts and Heritage Center, if anybody's interested, 1:00 PM, Wednesday the 28th. We are at about 12:42. My suggestion is that we recess, and that we schedule our agenda review at 1:30, following lunch, for 45 minutes. And then we will have an executive session for 30 minutes at about 12, at about 1:45. Does that work? We only have three items on the agenda review, so shouldn't be.
Give me those times again? We're going to start our executive.
We will recess until 1:30 PM to begin our agenda review, and then at 12:40, 1:45 PM, we will begin a 30-minute executive session.
Okay. So I move that the Board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at 1:30 for a period of 30 minutes.
No, 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 1:45.
Oh, I got it mixed up, okay. And so, and then what are, what are we looking at approximate time?
1:45 until 2:15.
2:15, thank you. Ms. Lee.
I move the Board recesses open meeting and convene an executive session at 1:45 for the total period of 30 minutes for the purpose of discussion of personal matters, of non-elected personnel, of protected privacy, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 2:15 or soon thereafter, as executive session may end.
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion, Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the request for the executive session and the time so stated. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor of motion carried. So we are in recess. We will take a luncheon break till 1:30 PM and come back for agenda review, followed by the executive session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.